Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Glendale City Council meeting on March the 1st, 2022, being called to order at 6:08 to help slow the transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of the community. City Council, as well as Board and Commission meetings, will continue to be closed to the public for in-person attendance. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high definition on the city's webpage, glendaleca.gov/live, on youtube.com/miglendale, and on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire devices, using a free app called Screenweed and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. Public comments on a specific agenda item will be taken when that agenda item is discussed. With that, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajian.
Councilmember Agajian.
President.
Brotman.
Here.
Kusakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Devine.
Here. And your report, please.
Madam Mayor, it would be the flag salute first.
Okay, thank you. Let's do it.
Please stand for today's flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Heavenly Father, as we meet each new day, please let us be filled with your Spirit. Wherever we go, let us spread love, joy, peace, goodness, and faithfulness. We praise you for this day and your purpose for it. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal fates give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. We thank you for the opportunity to come before you and serve this wonderful community. Amen.
Thank you. What's next, please?
Next is the agenda for the March 1st, 2022 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council, posted on February 23rd, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And next?
Next would be number three, presentation and appointments. Three A, agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, March 8th, 2022, by John Tuktalian, Deputy City Manager.
Thank you.
The City Council, next week, March 8th, will start off with a special meeting in the afternoon with one item from Community Services and Parks, and that'll be regarding the potential installation of a Filipino-American friendship monument adjacent to the Adult Recreation Center near Central Park. In the evening for the City Council meeting, we have a few consent items. The first will be the annual weed abatement program for fiscal year 2022 by the Fire Department, followed by a report from the Public Works Department regarding some exterior painting at the Corporation Yard. And the last item for consent will be from the City Attorney regarding a resolution to allow City Council and other legislative bodies to continue meeting remotely pursuant to the Brown Act. The only action item that evening, again, is from the City Attorney's Office, and that is regarding a discussion of the management and operation structure of the City Clerk's Office, potential division of the City Clerk's role into a ceremonial position, and professional assistant City Clerk position, or the potential adjustment of the City Clerk's salary. The final item that evening will be a report from the Public Works Department regarding an update on Assembly Bill 43 related to traffic safety. That is it.
All right. Thank you very much. What's next, please?
Item 3B is proclamation designated to March 2022 as Women's History Month.
Okay, and we have a proclamation here for Women's History Month requested by the Commission on the Status of Women, and it reads, "Whereas the President of the United States has declared March as Women's History Month, and whereas International Women's Day, which is observed on March 8th, is a global celebration commemorating the cultural, political, socioeconomic achievement of women, and also serves to bring attention to issues such as gender equality and violence and abuse against women. And whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of their homes. Whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force, and were important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas American women in every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change and movement, and whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. And now, therefore I, Paula Devine, Mayor of the City of Glendale, hereby proclaim the month of March as Women's History Month, and March 8th, 2022, as International Women's Day in Glendale. I call upon all Glendale residents to observe this month and to celebrate International Women's Day, and invite residents to visit glendalelac.org to learn about the vital contribution of women to our nation's history. And as I understand it, Armani Perian, who is the Chair, the Commissioner on the Status of Women, is here to accept and make some remarks. Armani, are you there?
I am.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Devine. Good evening, Mayor Devine and members of council. My name is Armani Perian, and as the Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women, I thank you on behalf of my fellow commissioners for this proclamation. Interestingly enough, Women's History Month has roots in the Commission on the Status of Women. It began as Women's History Week in 1978 that was started by the Sonoma County Commission on the Status of Women. The organizers had selected the week of March 8th to correspond with International Women's Day, and so Women's History Month, a celebration of women's contribution in American history to International Women's Day, which celebrates the achievements of women today. There are so many unacknowledged women who made history, and it's important to recognize the history of our country and everyone who contributed to the building of this nation, because history is inspirational to future generations. Thank you again for this important recognition.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much for those comments. And having been a member of the Commission on the Status of Women, I know how important it is to acknowledge the work that you all do, and I thank you very much for this, for requesting this proclamation. Very nice. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. What's next, please?
Next is consent items, including minutes to follow our routine, and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Do I have a motion for the consent item?
I move the items, please. One second, Ed.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kusakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next item?
City Council and staff comments.
Okay, do we have council comments? Any at all?
I have a comment.
Okay, Councilmember Najarian, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like everyone to know that one of the agencies that I sit on, MetroLink, has achieved a milestone that no other transit or rail agency in the entire world has achieved. And that is that, as of now, all of our MetroLink trains, locomotives, are running on renewable diesel. Renewable diesel is a fuel obtained from animal fats and vegetable fats, and it does not contain any petroleum distillates. And of course, the advantage to that is that the emissions from our locomotives are eighty, up to eighty percent less in the areas of carbon dioxide, nitrous oxide, and particulate matter. And for those who get it confused, MetroLink is the commuter rail agency, which serves six Southern California cities, Orange County, counties, excuse me, Orange County, Ventura County, San Bernardino, Riverside, Los Angeles, and also San Diego County, with the central hub being at LA Union Station. No other agency has reached this milestone, and I'm very proud to be on that board, which has achieved this milestone for environmental concerns. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? Councilmember Kusakian.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure that you'll touch upon the events that we've been at, but I will only say that it was very nice to be at a public event with members of our community. It seems as though we're having more events come up, and it's very heartwarming to see members of the community again face to face. But what I wanted to bring up is not related to that. I know that, I'm sure you're going to touch upon, the Arbor Day celebration today. I'd like to ask that, in preparation of our upcoming budget discussions, that we look at the impact, or staff incorporate, or perhaps even have a set aside, I would like to have a separate discussion on the cost of living increases that we've seen in CalPERS pensions and the impacts of the current rate of inflation, which is some of the highest that we've seen in our country in recent years. The COLA adjustments to CalPERS is the highest in 30 years, and it's partially driven by inflation. There was an article in the Sacramento Bee just today about it. And I'd like to know what, if staff can prepare us for what the impacts of that will be, and inform the public what the impacts of that will be on our payments to CalPERS or our pension obligations, and what impacts the overall economic outlook is having on CalPERS portfolio. So, either have that incorporated into the budget discussion, or have a discussion prior to starting our budget discussion, because I think it's important for us to have that clear picture moving forward.
Madam Mayor. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Galanian.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. In response to Councilmember Kusakian's request, if I may make a suggestion, as you know, the Pension Review Committee, our committee, is almost wrapping up their efforts and their meetings, and we will bring a report back to City Council sometime in April, April-ish, and my suggestion is that we include this request in that report since they're somewhat related. And it will be prior to the budget study sessions.
I'm satisfied by that.
Is that satisfactory to you, Councilmember?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Great. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I have two requests tonight. First is to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Patty Mack. And it's so apropos that we close, we adjourn tonight's meeting because we're talking about Women's Day, International Women's Day, and women who have fought for gender equality, and Patty was one of those. She lost a valiant battle against congestive heart failure on February 11th. Sorry. She was a friend. During her final, she was 91, by the way. Patty was born in Glendale and lived here her entire life. She was a popular physical education teacher at Glendale High School. Now you see the connection. And she was later promoted to Department Chair of Athletics for Women with an extra pay raise of 50 cents. She knew male coaches received far more in the same positions, so she decided to do something about it. She enlisted the help of the Women's Athletic Directors at Hoover High, La Crosse Center High, and I and St. Gabriel High School happened to be part of this group to join in a lawsuit against the Glendale School Board, well, actually, the United States, for equal pay for educators and equal rights for students under Title IX. Title IX had been passed by the federal government to allocate equal resources for both women and men in schools. However, this was not implemented by the Glendale Board of Education. The funds were there but not made available to the Women's Athletic Departments. The three plaintiffs won the lawsuit in 1972. Okay, that was a little bit different. Patty was involved with many charitable organizations. She was a member of the Glendale College Patrons Club and served as its president. Other civic organizations included Glendale Beautiful, Glendale Assistance League, American Association of University Women, California Retired Teachers Association, and the PEO Chapter FF. Her bubbly personality, her engaging smile, her cheerful disposition, and willingness to always help when needed will be sadly missed by all who knew her. She was married to Walter Mack, who taught history at John Muir High School in Pasadena, for 56 years, and every year, they, every time, they attended every Summer Olympics during their marriage. They lived in Glendale, and Patty is survived by several nieces and nephews, many friends, and hundreds of former students. So I would like to have us adjourned tonight in memory of Patty Mack. My second request, thank you, O'Farrell. My second request is this. I don't know that, if many of you know that, my heritage is Ukrainian. And on this, the sixth day of the invasion of the Ukraine by the Russians, I'm requesting that we light City Hall in blue and yellow in solidarity with the Ukrainian people. My grandparents immigrated from the Ukraine right before the Holodomor, when seven to 10 million Ukrainians were starved to death by the Russian government under Stalin. The Russians are now meeting stiff resistance by the Ukrainians who want to save their country. I hope that you will support this request of mine to stand in solidarity with the Ukrainians. We need to unite around our values of democracy. Let's be a force for good during this crisis. So I ask for a, I guess, a second on lighting the City Hall in blue and yellow. Is there agreement?
I'm happy to second that.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we need to, we don't need to take a vote because that's not an agenda item, but thank you, Councilmember Brotman. I appreciate that, and I hope that that will be done soon. Thank you. Next item?
Madam Mayor, next item is community event announcement, three-minute portion. I do have one caller on the line.
Okay, let's hear it.
Edwin, you are live. You have three minutes, sir. Go ahead.
Yes. Good evening, councilmembers, and good evening, Mayor Devine. It's me again, Edwin. I was calling you guys to bring it to your attention that I saw a news story on CBS 2 News regarding an incident that happened in your city. What I've learned is that this gentleman has been arrested three times in a 16-hour span on a Sunday. What I've learned is that this suspect was spotted at the intersection of Colorado and Luis, and he was arrested around 3:00 in the morning. And he was released, and then Glendale PD gets another call, and he was breaking into an auto body shop located at the intersection of 1400 East Chevy Chase Drive. So they arrested him, and they released him again. And then the third time, what I learned is that he was arrested for a third time because he broke into an apartment, and he has caused $6,000 worth of damage inside an apartment. And I'm like blown away that this is happening in the City of Glendale. So my question is, so George Gascon has a zero-bill policy, and I understand that you guys have written him a letter regarding his policies, and so far, he has totally disregarded the concerns that your city has and all cities have. So my question is, will this city put their foot down and say enough is enough, we're going to take legal action by filing a lawsuit against District Attorney George Gascon? So is that something that you guys are looking into doing by filing lawsuits against DA Gascon to see if his zero-bill policy is legal or not? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Edwin, all I can say is that this isn't the only city where this is happening. Mr. Garcia, can you comment on a lawsuit against Mr. Gascon?
Madam Mayor, members of council, as you're aware, that is not something that the city is currently looking at. We are looking at some additional options related to prosecution within Glendale. And I would note that there was a previous lawsuit filed, I believe, by the Association of Deputy District Attorneys challenging some of those directives. Some of that lawsuit was successful, some of it was not. But some of those challenges are proceeding.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. Okay. Next item?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Ogajanian. Go ahead.
I mean, this is what I have reported a week ago about this person who broke into different places three times, three times in a day. I mean, this is not in a period of time. It happened in one day. To the first, I'm not trying to support Mr. Gascon, but he filed, and they said that they're going to file against this person to take him to court. That's what they have said. As I said, I just wanted to say what his office has said, not to support or go against him.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Ogajanian, for that information. Appreciate it. Okay, next item?
Next item is 888 Action Items, which is Community Services in Parks Regarding Direction Regarding 2022 Fireworks Shows in Glendale. One Motion Providing Direction on Sponsorship of Crescenta Valley Fireworks Association 2022 CV Firework Show. Two, Resolution of Appropriation to Shift $5,000 in Measure S Funds From the Montrose Christmas Parade Program to the CV Firework Show Program to Sponsor the 2022 CV Firework Show. Three, Motion Providing Direction on the City's 2022 Jewel City Sparkles Firework Show in Downtown Glendale. And Four, Resolution of Appropriation to Appropriate $15,000 for the 2022 Jewel City Sparkles Firework Show in Downtown Glendale by Shifting $5,000 in Measure S Funds from the Montrose Christmas Parade Program and Appropriating $10,000 in Donations.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, thank you. Madam Mayor, members of City Council, last year, we had a successful fireworks, Fourth of July fireworks show in downtown Glendale. Now, it's that time of the year that we need direction on plans for this year's show. If directed to move forward, we are asking for $15,000 in appropriation for the, as it was read into record, for this year's Jewel City Sparkles Firework Show as well as a $5,000 that we have done, appropriation that we have made to CV Firework Show on an annual basis. The $15,000 appropriation will cover the cost, and the rest will be borne by a $10,000 donation from Mr. Rick Crusoe, as well as a $5,000 transfer of funds from the Montrose Christmas Parade Program that didn't take place last year. Mr. Bulanikian, our Director of Community Services in Parks, is available to respond to any questions that you may have.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Kasakian?
So I just want folks listening at home to be clear that when we talk about transferring money from the Christmas parade account, it's not from the upcoming Christmas parade that will potentially and hopefully take place this year after a long overdue absence. But it's from last year's that did not take place where we had already allocated money to that event, which did not occur. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Bulanikian, I don't know if you're right.
You hear me? Am I on? I'm sorry. Madam Mayor, members of the council and Councilmember Kasakian, you are correct. Since the 2021 Christmas parade was canceled because of COVID, we have additional $10,000 in Measure S funds. So we would like to allocate $5,000 of, out of that $10,000 to the CV Firework Show and additional $5,000 to our Jewel City Sparkles Show, which will be located in downtown Glendale.
And one more comment, Madam Mayor. I know that the fireworks show has been a longstanding tradition in the CV area, and I certainly support that. In terms of any thing that we do in the future, I've, it's fine if we're moving forward with fireworks show this year, but I know that it causes a lot of concerns, especially we heard from some folks in the Rancho area. And of course, pet owners are concerned about the health and safety of their animals during these fire shows, fireworks shows. As an alternative, and staff has said that at this time, it's cost prohibitive. But there are light shows, aerial light shows conducted with drones. I think one such drone light show took place during the Super Bowl that was hosted here in Los Angeles. There are examples of these aerial drone light shows that one can see on YouTube that are very detailed, very intricate, very entertaining. And I think that they're a safer, more environmentally sustainable way of celebrating major events. Unfortunately, from what I understand, the buy-in at this point would be $100,000 just for a more basic show. But I am convinced that moving forward in the future, we're going to see more of this. And as soon as it becomes available and it reaches that point where it's within our budget, I'd like to request staff to look at that as to substitute fireworks with. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Councilmember Najarian?
Yes. You know, I'm wondering if there's some way we can coordinate our cruise night with a Fourth of July celebration. I know we do have a modest fireworks show for cruise night. You know, the point is to bring the community together, not necessarily the smoke and the flash, although that's, that has its attractions, especially to the younger crowd. And of course, this year is out of the question. But looking forward, let's see if that's something we can coordinate. Maybe cruise night in our street fair, if you will, with some, of course, we have musical acts, the concert. And as an adjunct to that, some sort of show, whether it's a light show or fireworks show. I think we may be getting a better bang for our buck. Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to say that. We may have some greater cost efficiencies if we do that. I don't know if, I'm sure you guys have thought of that, but if you would maybe look at that again, maybe with some out-of-the-box ideas like the drone show. Or I think it was at the Olympics, if I'm not mistaken. I remember seeing the drones this Winter Olympics two weeks ago. The other point is I know that staff has been looking for some funding that the $5,000 that would transfer to Glendale would not cover the entire $36,000. And I know that we're getting some sponsorship from Crusoe in the amount of $10,000. Let's, you know, I would, I would say let's, let's appropriate the funds, but continue to work in getting some larger five-digit sponsors, you know, from the $10,000 range. I'm sure there's many consultants and concessionaires with the city of Glendale that if asked would be happy to step up and, well, I mean, I'll tell you right now. I would be going to ask the garbage franchisees to each kick in up to $10,000 as a show of good faith to the community. And we can pursue that. Of course, that's not a one-phone-call act, but those type of concessionaires who are now part of the city of Glendale fabric and perhaps have not been asked before to help take part. And whether, you know, whether it is a fireworks display or whether it's a support for this combined street fair, cruise night, whatever that might be, I think we should be in touch with them and make it a habit for them to support the city in one of many other ways which are available to them, along with our charities and nonprofits. But this would be perhaps our first ask of them at this point.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Brotman or Ogajanian, any thoughts?
Well, yeah, if I might, I'm not a big fan of fireworks. I think last time this came up, I said the same thing, but I went along because I don't want to be the spoiler here. But I do, you know, the CV fireworks program, I guess, is something that has been ongoing for many years. And, you know, I'm okay supporting that. I don't really want to get into a new tradition of holding a fireworks show that, you know, that we sponsor like we did last time. And I would much rather try to find, I like the idea of a combined street fair. I like the idea of some kind of light show, whether it's a drone or from the ground, I don't know. Maybe it's too late to kind of get something done for this July 4th. So again, you know, I just, I'm not crazy about this thing, but I don't want to be the spoiler. So I'll go along with it. But, you know, I think going forward, I really, really would like us to figure out another way to celebrate the Fourth of July that doesn't, you know, upset horses and dogs and doesn't pollute the air.
Thank you. Councilmember Ogajanian?
Yes, I was going to say basically the same thing. I'm okay with the CV fireworks because they're doing it for such a long time. My kids were newborn, and I took them there to see the fireworks. But I mean, I'm worried in the middle of the city of Glendale if this is fire hazard or it's not a firework. But I think next year, let's think about it or do the firework, which is not noisy at least, to use equipment or whatever they're going to use, but not to make it as noisy as it is now. Because I have two dogs, and we are having major problem when they're demonstrating the fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, here's a news flash. Councilmember Brotman, you're not the only spoiler. Neither are you, Mr. Councilmember Ogajanian, because I have a couple of reasons why I'm having a problem supporting the downtown fireworks. First of all, CV fireworks are fantastic, and a lot of people go, and I support that wholeheartedly. So there's no question that I would support allocating the money. The thing about the downtown Glendale fireworks, number one, we have cruise night two weeks after the Fourth of July. And so that would be fireworks on the Fourth and fireworks at cruise night. Number two, and I didn't realize this, but it costs $1,000 a minute for fireworks. And that's kind of the average, the average cost. And I was shocked. And I don't know that I'm ready to allocate, what is it, $15,000 for fireworks this year. And number three, you know, last year, I think, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, Central Park was an area where a lot of people brought chairs and blankets and their kids and gathered to watch the fireworks. And this year, that's not available. So who's going to be watching the fireworks? You know, if you're at a restaurant and you're on the street, I don't know how much you can see. And I know last year, living up here, I hardly saw anything. So I'm really not in favor this year. I'm in favor, okay, maybe next year we can revisit. But for this year, I'm not, I can't really, I'm reluctant to support the fireworks in downtown. I would much rather support and go up to CV High School or CV, yeah, and see the fireworks up there. They're always really good. So that's where I am. And that's, if there's a motion for, let's see, for providing, yes, Mr. Councilmember Kasakian?
I'd like to move that we provide the funding for CV fireworks and put on hold any plans for a July 4th downtown show.
Madam Mayor, that would be item 8A1.
And two.
One, correct.
And two.
And two, right. Okay, so that, so those, is there a second? Thank you, Councilwoman.
I can second that.
So, Madam Mayor, can we bifurcate those? Can we take those two separately? One for CV, the one for Glendale Downtown? Because I have.
I'll be happy to. I'll make the motion for 8A1 is for the allocation for Crescenta Valley. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And 8A2, I think you need appropriation of funding.
And the funding, so it is both of those.
And 8A3 and 4 are for the downtown. So I think what Councilman Najarian is suggesting is to move.
8A1 and 2?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And there is a second for those. And that does not include the downtown.
That's correct.
Correct. So we have for 8A1 and 2, a motion and a second. Do we have a roll call, please? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Ogajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. And then 8A3 and 4 will, there will be no motion, so they fail? Is that correct, Garcia, or do we have?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
I know, I know where it's going. But I'll move 8, 8A3 and 4.
Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, before we vote, it looks like there's a call coming in.
Okay, let's hear that.
It looks like the call just dropped.
Motion fails for lack of a second. So we'll move on. Correct? Correct. Okay, thank you all. Next item?
Next item is 8B Public Works Regarding Ordinance Amendment to Glendale Municipal Code 10.24.020, The Lower the Posted Speed Limits on Nine Roadway Segments. One, Ordinance Amendment Section 10.24.020 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 pertaining to the prima fastest speed limit on non-local city streets.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Devine, members of City Council, this report and the ordinance, the amendment to the ordinance, is presented to you to lower the posted speed limit on nine roadway segments in the city. And this is based on the most recent engineering and traffic surveys that Public Works has conducted. And we need an amendment to the MUNI code, Glendale Municipal Code, to be able to enforce the new speed limits. If you'd like additional information, Mr. Mroni, Director of Public Works, and Mr. Casanova, our traffic engineer, are available to provide that or if you have any questions off them.
Let's have the report so the audience can hear what's happening.
Thank you. Good morning, sorry, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. As Mr. Galanian mentioned, we set the speed limits in accordance with the California MUTCD, which governs those rules, as well as the California Vehicle Code. And engineering and traffic survey is required for any street that's wider than 40 feet to set the speed limit by gauging the 85th percentile speeds. So there were several, Segment 63, to be exact, that were, their speed limit was about to, the validation of the speed limit was about to expire in 2020. So we set out to redo those ENTS surveys for these segments. And of those 63, nine were found to warrant a lower speed limit. And in addition, there were three segments that had previously, we had surveyed in 2013 and 2015, which were left inadvertently off the previous code amendment. So we are respectfully requesting the, an amendment to the code so that the code can be updated with these newly updated speed limits. And if you like, we do have a short presentation. Otherwise, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Please, if you do the presentation, please?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Mr. Casanova.
OK, thank you. Let me see if I can get it on my screen here. OK, and can everybody see the, at least the front page of the presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, this presentation will be on speed limit changes on various streets in the city of Glendale.
Excuse me, Mr. Casanova, can you put it on presentation mode so we can, so it's a little bigger?
Thank you, Councilman Brotman for the reminder. Thank you.
There we go.
OK, there we go. OK, so first we'll go over the engineering and legal references that are used in.
Pastor, we cannot see the presentation.
OK, then. I don't know what happened. I have it on, I have it on view mode. Let's try that again then.
Pastor, do you want me to take it over from my end? And then you can say next?
That that would be great. Something seems to be going on here.
Give me a second. Councilmembers and pastor, can you see this on the screen?
Yes.
OK.
Yes.
Pastor, let me know and I'll change these slides.
Great, thank you, thank you. OK, let's start over. Sorry for that technical difficulty. And so, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, tonight's presentation is on speed limit changes on various city streets in the city of Glendale. Next slide, please. First, we'll go over the engineering and legal references that are used in setting speed limits. The California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, or California MUTCD, provides the engineering guidance. The California Vehicle Code provides the legal framework for enforceability. And the California Manual on Setting Speed Limits provides the guidance on how to conduct the engineering and traffic surveys. Next slide, please. An engineering and traffic survey is required to set and enforce the legal speed limits on streets where speeds are not set by state prima facie law, such as on residential streets and in school zones. The Engineering and Traffic Survey measures the prevailing vehicular speeds and establishes establishes the speed limit at or near the 85th percentile speed. And the California Manual for Setting Speed Limits provides the guidance on how to conduct the engineering and traffic surveys. Next slide. One of the main components of the Engineering and Traffic Survey is the radar speed survey, where a radar device is used to survey and record the speed of 100 cars in each direction on the segment that's being reviewed. That data that's retrieved from the radar speed survey is used to calculate the 85th percentile speed. Next slide. As discussed in an earlier slide, the California MUTCD provides the engineering guidance and states that the posted speed limit shall be established at the nearest five mile per hour increment of the 85th percentile speed. Examples of that would be that if the Engineering and Traffic Survey calculated an 85th percentile speed of 37 miles per hour, that would be rounded down to the nearest five mile increment, which is 35 miles per hour. On the other hand, if the 85th percentile speed is found to be 38 miles per hour, then the nearest five mile per hour increment is 40 miles per hour. However, two options are allowed under the current California MUTCD guidelines. Next slide, please. Option number one states that the posted speed limit may be reduced by five miles per hour from the 85th percentile speed. In that case, a justification is required. And usually, the Engineering and Traffic Survey considers other safety-related factors, such as pedestrian and bicycle safety. Option two are in cases where the nearest five mile per hour increment of the 85th percentile speed requires rounding up. In those cases, the speed limit may be rounded down without justification. However, no further reductions are allowed. Next slide. CDC Section 40802 provides the legal framework for setting the speed limits. Consequently, the city of Glendale's speed limits are set using the CDC and local ordinance. Staff routinely conducts engineering and traffic surveys every seven or up to 14 years, whenever they they lapse or are reaching laps. And any changes in the speed limit require an amendment to existing local ordinances. Next slide, please. In this slide, we'll go over the street segments that require an engineering and traffic survey. In the city of Glendale, 95 roadway segments require an engineering and traffic study to set speed limits and allow for speed enforcement. 63 of the Engineering and Traffic Surveys were scheduled to lapse in 2020. And as such, staff conducted the Engineering and Traffic Surveys in compliance with the California Vehicle Code, the California MUTCD, as well as the Caltrans guidance. The results of the Engineering and Traffic Study showed that there was a potential to lower the speed limit on nine roadway segments, which we'll go over in the next slide.
Can I ask a question?
All right, Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, could you just go back to the last slide for a second, please? So you say that 63 of these traffic study, engineering and traffic studies were scheduled to lapse in 2020, but we're now 2022. So does that mean for the last couple of years, we've had 63 segments that really weren't, where we really couldn't enforce speed limits because we didn't have a valid engineering and traffic study completed?
63, let me do a quick calculation, 63 minus 9, so 53 of the of the studies have already been updated. And and those speed limits stayed the same. So, but out of the total 63, nine of them we could lower. And and that's why we're here today to go over those.
Right, that's, yeah, that's not really what I mean. What I mean is, let's say you weren't coming here today to do this. So what you're saying is that that sometime, I guess, after 2020, we had 63 that had lapsed. And so if we didn't make this change, I mean, or maybe for the last year or two, we've had 63 segments where we really couldn't enforce our speed limits? Is that, is that accurate?
That, that, if that were the case, but that's not the case. We did conduct all of the engineering and traffic surveys. So most of the locations stayed the same speed limit, which did not require amending the current ordinance. So of those 63, nine of them could be lowered, which is why we're here today to to recommend lowering of speed limit on those nine segments. But the other, the other remaining of the 63 have an engineering and traffic survey and support the existing speed limit. So they are enforceable.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Galanian.
Yes. Let me see if I can put it in another word. We need an amendment to the Glendale Municipal Code to be able to enforce the reduced speed limits. All right, so if we not, our ENTS has not indicated that we can reduce a posted speed limit, then we can continue enforcing those speed limits. But if we are asking to reduce them, then we need an amendment to the code. Does that answer your question, Councilmember?
Yes, I see, I think so, yeah. So if if one of these engineering and traffic studies has lapsed, we can continue with the existing posted speed limit. Somebody wouldn't come and say, oh, well, you don't have a traffic study that's, you know, that's valid, so you can't enforce the speed limit at all? That's not the way it works, huh?
What what has done is that if the speed limit lapses, say, in 2020, and if roadway conditions have not changed, then that speed limit can be extended. It used to be 10 years and it's now 14 years. So on those nine street segments that we're here to review today, there have not been changes in in roadway conditions, such as adding additional general purpose traffic lanes. So those speed limits are still enforceable. And here, what we're here to do today is recommend the lowering of speed limits on on nine of the segments.
OK, I think I got it. OK, thank you.
OK. Next slide, please. So this is a, we'll go through a few vicinity maps to get a graphical depiction on where these nine roadway segments are in the city. And segment number, they're numbered one through four on this slide, and there'll be subsequent slides for for the rest of the locations. Location number one is Broadway between Central and Glendale, where the existing speed limit is 35 miles per hour and the proposed speed limit is 30. Segment number two, just to the right, is Broadway between Glendale Avenue and Wilson Avenue, existing speed limit 35 and proposed is 30 miles per hour. Segment number three is Chevy Chase between Acacia Avenue and Glen Oaks Boulevard, existing speed limit 35 miles per hour and proposed is 30. And location number four on the upper right is Chevy Chase Drive between Leith Road and Charing Cross Road, where the existing speed limit is 30 miles per hour and the proposed is 25 miles per hour. Next slide, please. These are locations six through nine, starting with the upper left. Location six is Lowell between Foothill Boulevard and Santa Carlotta Street, where the existing speed limit is 30 and proposed is 25. Location number seven, in the middle part of the screen, is Montrose between Raymond Avenue and Ramsdale Avenue, existing speed limit is 35 miles per hour and proposed is 30. And location number eight, on the bottom right, is Ocean View Boulevard between Verdugo Road and the North City Limits. And the existing speed limit is 35 miles per hour, proposed is 30. Oh, and location number nine, sorry, down below, is Verdugo Road between La Crescent Avenue and Honolulu Avenue, where the existing speed limit is 40 miles per hour and the proposed speed limit is 35 miles per hour. Next slide, please. On this vicinity map, you'll see locations 10, 11, and 12, which are beyond the nine. And and in this vicinity map, it is not recommended to lower any speed limits, but rather, these are three locations that were previously surveyed and inadvertently not updated in a prior ordinance amendment. Therefore, we're proposing to include those, again, not as a reduction, but to add them to the to the ordinance to be legal and enforceable. Location number 10 is Fairmont Avenue between Concord Street and the 134 freeway ramps. The proposed speed limit and existing is 30 miles per hour. Location number 11 on the lower left is Fairmont Avenue between Flower Street and the 134 freeway ramps, existing and proposed speed limit is 35 miles per hour. And on the upper portion of the vicinity map, location 12, McGinn Drive between Pacific Avenue and McGinn Place, existing and proposed are 25 miles per hour. Next slide, please. And this exhibit is a summary of the vicinity maps that we just went over. Again, location one through nine are recommended street segments for lowering of the speed limit. In each case, the recommendation is to lower the speed limit by five miles per hour. Locations 10 to 12, 12 as mentioned, are locations that were not incorporated in previous versions of the of the ordinance and are recommended to be included this time around. Next slide, please. Very similar slide. In this slide, what's added is on the fourth column, you'll see what the existing speed limit is. Sorry, the fourth column from the left shows the existing speed limit. The fifth column from the left shows the 85th percentile speed that was calculated with the Engineering and Traffic Survey. The next column shows the justification for reducing by the five miles per hour as as optioned in the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And in in those cases, it mainly considered pedestrian and bicycle safety for the reduction. And in the last column is the proposed speed limit, which is five miles per hour below the existing on the first nine locations. Next slide, please. Fiscal impacts, for the most part, what needs to be done on these street segments, the nine locations with the lower, proposed lower speeds, are to replace the speed limit signs. And and there's a quantity of signs on the far right of the exhibit with the number. And the estimated cost and fiscal impacts are $6,000, which are in the current Public Works budget. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, and with consideration of the Engineering and Traffic Survey findings, the staff recommends the City Council to adopt amendments to the Glendale Municipal Code, Section 10.24.02, related to prima facie speed limits on non-local streets, including the nine locations that we discussed and are shown below, as well as the three locations that are added. And that concludes the presentation. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to to respond.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for the item?
I just want to ask you a question, if it's possible.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Councilmember.
Mr. Casanova, is there, in the rules and regulation, you can mark a street which is, let's say, it's uphill or coming down fast, like streets like Pennsylvania or New York, which is very steep, dry? Is there any way one side going north, let's say, to have higher speed limit than coming down? The speed limit be different at two sides of the street, going north or coming south?
Councilman Agajanian, that's a very good question. And it it wouldn't be preferable to have it that way, based on the law. I haven't seen anything in the law that prohibits that. But I would think on a on a real standpoint from a driver, then that you really wouldn't be in tune with the uphill and downhill differences in speed. So, but we can look into that and provide you with a more detailed response for a little bit of research.
If you can, I will appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, I have I have another question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Brotman.
You know, so we do these these Engineering and Traffic Surveys. How do you decide when to do them? And is it, you're you're kind of capturing these 100 cars all in one instance? Or you're doing them at different times of the day, different days of the week? Because I can imagine if you go out on a Sunday when there's not much traffic, people are probably going faster than if you go out when there's a lot of traffic, it's a lot of stop and start, you're going to see slower speeds. How do you, how do you handle that?
Yeah, that, Councilman Brotman, that is a very good question. What staff does is we follow the Caltrans guidelines on how to conduct these studies. And generally, the guidelines direct that the the time when you do the the radar speed survey be on a typical traffic day under free-flow traffic conditions. So normally, the studies are not done on a weekend, but rather on a typical weekday during non-peak traffic hours. Because peak traffic hours, since there's congestion, that's not, at least in terms of the guidance, representative of the speed limit. So these speed surveys are done during a typical weekday, during free-flow traffic conditions that are representative of that speed limit on the street. And hopefully, that responds to your question.
Yeah, it it does, that that does. And I'm also wondering if if you were to go out and do the survey, you know, today, let's say, and then you went out and did the survey a month from now, do you typically get the same result? Or is there a lot of variability? You know, because because it's interesting how we're, you know, the whole concept of how we set speed limits based on the way people actually drive, right? And we don't set it at the average of what people drive. We set it at kind of the the higher end, right? One standard deviation above the, I guess, the the mean, right? It's just, I'm just curious, like, we're so boxed in by that. And I wonder how much variability if we if we test it at different, you know, at different times, different months, different days of the week?
That's Councilman Brotman, members of the council. That is a very good question and one of the biggest challenges. That is a very good question and one of the biggest challenges, I think, that local agencies face when when conducting such studies. And we know other cities, I know City of L.A., for example, you know, over the past several years had really hundreds of miles of their streets where they raised speed limits. And that is one of the challenges. And next week, we do have a presentation on AB 43 and upcoming changes. And AB 43 and the changes to the CVC are slated at providing some additional flexibility to to local agencies to be able to, you know, keep the speed limits low. Some of those changes can take effect immediately and and help out in certain conditions, and others are going to take some time for Caltrans to modify and update the California Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices and the methodologies. But that should help agencies address some of the the points that you brought up. Okay, thanks.
Madam Mayor, before we move on, I do have two callers for this item.
Okay, thank you. Let's hear them, please.
Mark Abadjan. Mark, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Yes, hello. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and council members for letting me speak. I live in the Glendale, my name is Mark Abadjan. I live in the Glendale Annex of La Crescenta. I do spend time, for example, down on that street, that's Montrose Avenue, one of the proposed streets. I know that that's a long street. I believe that it passes through part of Glendale and then goes back into county area, I believe. And so I'm curious about whether changing the speed limit in the Glendale portion of the street could affect traffic so that someone maybe driving thirty-five miles an hour have to slow down to meet new thirty mile an hour speeds in the Glendale portion and then, you know, be surprised by the fact that that street, which looks pretty similar all along, all of a sudden has a different speed limit. So something that I was concerned about, just wanted to share that with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Next caller.
Ms. Valentine, you have three minutes. Ms. Valentine, go ahead.
Yes, my question is, I haven't heard, is, does the city have any truck routes marked? Are there any streets at fifteen miles per hour? Mr. Brotman, they were on vacation from 2020, 21, 22. The city was on vacation, that's why. How how is this change compatible within the other streets? Is this in just in small increments? It's very confusing to me. When will be the next time that this test will be conducted? And thank you, Mr. Pastor Casanova, for your beautiful golden arrow signs through Glendale. Okay, bye.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that was the last caller.
Okay, is there an answer there for for Mr. Casanova? When will the next study be done?
Yes, if I understood where she was referring to the continuity of the Engineering and Traffic Surveys, I'm not sure if I fully understood the question.
I think she was asking when the next group of lapsed streets will be coming forward. I think that was the last question she asked.
Oh, okay. We can certainly look that information up and and add to the AB 43 presentation next week and provide that update.
All righty, great, thank you. All right then.
Madam.
Yes, my member Agagianian, is that?
Yes, the gentleman, I guess you called Mark, asked you that the same street, continuation of the same street, we marked different speed in, let's say, it connects to the next city and they have higher or lower speed than us. How you explain that? Why they did the same survey probably and they came up with another number? And people they drive, they think they see at one place on the Glen Oaks, they do not know where Glen Oaks ends in Burbank or Glendale. So I see speed is written thirty-five miles an hour, and then I go to the next city and if we or they then change the speed limit. So I'd be unaware and I will drive, I will be at fault. How you explain that?
Yes, Councilmember Agagianian, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Continuity is important. And what we can do is, as we focus on the city of Glendale portion, is share the information with the neighbor cities. I know here in Public Works, we're in constant contact with our neighboring cities in both Burbank or all three Burbank, Los Angeles, and Pasadena. So if there are any locations where we feel that there's that continuity break, we can definitely share that information with them for their consideration and maybe redoing the Engineering and Traffic Survey if they differ. But at least certainly to add additional signage to make sure that drivers are not caught unaware that you're entering from one speed limit zone to another. The speed limit zones that that we have set include location of speed limit signs. So anytime there's a speed limit zone at the very beginning, will be a speed limit sign. And depending on the length of the of the zone, it might include several speed limit signs to advise motorists of the speed limit for that segment.
Okay, thank you.
And also, the drivers have to pay attention, correct, Mr. Casanova?
Madam Mayor, that is very, very correct.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Okay, do we have a motion on this item?
It's for introduction, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, anyone want to introduce?
I'll introduce it.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, let's move on to the next item.
Next item is Glendale Water and Power regarding Grayson Repowering Project. One motion providing direction regarding development of additional clean energy resources and negotiation of reserves. Two resolution amending Resolution Number 22-29 to provide direction to staff regarding the phasing and implementation of Alternative 7.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes. Madam Mayor, members of City Council, at the February 15 meeting, the City Council, the majority City Council, voted to certify the final EIR for the Grayson Repowering Project. This was a significant step towards securing a reliable and cleaner energy source for the city. And I know it wasn't an easy decision to make, and we truly appreciate that direction. That decision also included the selection of Alternative 7, which includes five natural gas engines and a Tesla Megabattery pack. While deliberating on that item, Councilmember Brotman requested and Councilmember Najarian seconded a motion for a report on the potential of exploring certain programs and renewable energy initiatives and additional energy efficiency measures, as well as working with the L.A. Department of Water and Power Staff on the potential of purchasing additional transmission reserves. The proposed motion would essentially modify Alternative 7 and would delay the purchase of Wartzilla engines to a later date. Tonight's presentation will cover the risks, financial and sequential impacts of such proposal and inherent project management challenges associated with the proposed delay. Although the city and GWP are at the forefront of renewable and clean energy in their portfolios compared to other utilities, we are genuinely committed to pursuing further renewable and clean energy programs and will do so having the certainty that we can keep the lights on, so to speak, now knowing that we have a reliable backup source in case we need to use it. That said, I'd like to remind everyone that this evening's item is regarding the question whether to modify Alternative 7 or maintain the previously selected and voted on alternative in the certified final EIR. Lastly, it's important to note that there will be multiple decision points for council to make in the coming months, in the next couple of years, as it relates to contracts with Wartzilla, Tesla, Unit 9 separations, site work, and demolition, amongst other things. Would also be happy to provide you with progress reports on a regular basis, like we have done in the past, on the status of staff's efforts on the renewable energy front, as well as communication and coordination with the L.A. Department of Water and Power Staff. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, Mark Young, to kick off the presentation, and he'll be ably assisted, or is it Dave Tateosian?
It'll be me.
And then ably assisted by David Tateosian, our consultant, as well as Ms. Christine Godinez from our City Attorney's Office. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, thank you for giving us time to discuss this with you this evening. In summary, I believe this is the proposed modification to Alt 7. So we're going to proceed with Number 9 separation, the demolition and site improvement, the Tesla Megapack, and the Glendale Switching Station. So we're going to prepare, but we're not going to purchase the Wartzilla engines. And we're going to delay that decision of how many, if we need any, till later on this year. In addition to that, we will procure fifty megawatts or we'll enter into negotiations to procure fifty megawatts of distributed energy resources. And we do further studies on hydrogen and long-term duration, as well as continuing to talk to Los Angeles with regard to assistance with our reserves. Immediate impacts to the delay. We would be having no generation while we were decommissioning the plant, which is very, very dangerous for for Glendale. The Wartzilla contract negotiations would be put on hold.
Can I ask a question? Sorry.
Hold on.
Can I ask a question as we're going?
Um, go ahead, Mr. Brotman.
Because you say no gener, no generation, oh, contract in place before decommission. Okay, because we're not going to have generation while we're decommissioning regardless, right?
Other than Number 9, that's correct.
Other than Number 9, okay, I misread it.
And it's my bad. I meant, I meant generation contract in place, sorry.
Okay.
The Wartzilla contract negotiations will be put on hold until City Council determines the number of Wartzilla engines that we need. And Wartzilla will not commit to any more engineering resources that they've already given us, which is necessary for for site preparation. As a result, the bonding of a full project will not be able to be proceeded. And we'll have continued uncertainty on third parties like AQMD, Wartzilla, bondholder, rating agencies, et cetera. The future impacts of the delay. Extending the time increases costs. It increases uncertainty for being able for Glendale to power plan in both the Integrated Resource Plan and our hedging policy. We must procure capacity in energy for four years instead of three years. The Wartzilla Power Island will have to be repriced as a result of negotiations later and quantity of engines. The Glendale Switching Station would be delayed since that is the lay-down area for the construction of the Wartzilla engines, which might have an impact on the four-to-twelve KV conversion. We'd be forced to, or we would recommend, the installation of the seventy-five megawatt, three-hundred-megawatt-hour battery as opposed to the fifty-two-hundred-megawatt-hour battery with the other twenty-five coming on at a later date. This would create two problems for us. Towards the later end of the battery life, all the battery would be at its end of life. And we would prevent us from being able to enjoy new technologies if there were any to occur within the timeframe that we previously stated. And with that, I'd like to introduce Dave.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. As Mark's already talked about. In delaying the decision on number of Wartzillas, that drives us into another summer of needing to arrange for replacement capacity and energy. In planning the site work at Grayson, the Wartzilla engines, because of the weight of the equipment and the site conditions, needs to go on piles. And it is a congested site. And so there are a number of piles that need to be driven right next to where the Tesla Megapacks are going to be set. And so the project planning was always to do that pile driving as a very first activity after site improvement work was done and Wartzilla and Tesla mobilized to the site. And so by delaying Wartzilla, we face the issue of how do we drive the piles and not impact the Megapacks? There's also long lead equipment that Wartzilla needs to procure. And it's not just a matter of placing an order for the equipment. It's an issue of placing an order for the equipment. Their engineering gets done so that they can provide foundation loads. The foundations can be designed, piles can be designed, and then ordered and procured and available for at the end of site improvement work so we can start driving those piles. And lastly, delaying the Wartzilla further complicates our lay-down space and parking space planning for the project. This is the Alternative 7 site plan. There are fifty-six piles here in this area. And it's seventeen feet from the pile to here are the Megapacks. And we're very concerned about ending up in a position where we have to be driving piles. Okay, we're into the ground, pounding them in next to the Megapacks, their foundations, their ductwork and duct banks and so on. So that creates a couple of options if we delay. One is to mobilize Wartzilla twice. And there's a cost impact to that. So they could come, one, they gotta do the engineering work, as I've already talked about. But come, mobilize, drive the piles, all right? And then allow Tesla installation to proceed. Or we take the risk, which we're not recommending, of driving the piles during or after the Tesla Megapack installation. So we're recommending against driving piles after the Megapacks are in after the foundations that we just think that pile driving work needs to be done in advance of that work. And then, lastly, considering, as we already talked about, Glendale's very dependent on imported power. Eighty-five percent of your energy is imported. And so, you know, as best we can, we have tried to minimize the time needed to be with, rely only on Unit 9 for local generation. This is a simplified project schedule. And on the top, I don't know if the public can see the cursor here. On the top, this was the, this is the original and current project plan. On the bottom, inside the red box, what we did, it's the same for, same schedule in terms of Unit 9 separation, the demolition, site improvement work. And it's the same for the Tesla Megapacks. What changes, though, is we, in my recollection from two weeks ago, as Mr. Brotman discussed, waiting till December. And so we put in a nine-month window here to decide on how many Wartzillas. And then added time for contracting, negotiate the contract with Wartzilla, then go, my apologies, the cursor keeps disappearing. Then we go through the process to issue bonds for the Wartzilla portion. And then the same, this is the same schedule as up here. This is what has been negotiated with Wartzilla. is the same schedule as up here, this is what has been negotiated with Wartzilla. And so now we get into Wartzilla's doing their EPC engineering procurement and the Wartzilla construction. And as you can see, the start of Wartzilla construction starts basically after, this shows nine months, Tesla's actual schedule is 10 months, but you can see the Wartzilla construction starts after Tesla is largely complete. That's one issue. Secondly, there's a nine-month extension in the completion, and another cost impact is the balance of site EPC contractor, their time on-site is extended. Their job is to integrate the Wartzilla and Tesla Power Islands into the rest of the site, and they're actually the last people that get done, because one of their last things to do is all the surfacing on the site, the asphalt work that needs to be done. You want to do that last after all construction's done. So extending the balance of site EPC contractor, while the work scope may be the same, just that extension in time translates to additional cost. So with that, I want to turn it over to Ms. Godinez to address the next slide.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. I'd just like to go through quickly the bond financing considerations related to the modified Alternative 7 and the delay in a decision on Wartzilla. We did talk a little bit about this on February 15th, but I just wanted to reiterate that you cannot issue bonds for an uncertain project until you know what you're building and have a reasonable expectation of building that project. You can't move forward with the bonds. You also wouldn't know what the cost would be. Tax-exempt bonds specifically require that you have a reasonable expectation of spending 85% of the bond proceeds within three years. So until you know if it's five Wartzillas, two Wartzillas, no Wartzillas, you could not move forward with bonding that project. So that would lead you to two bond financings, bifurcating the bonds. That's definitely an option, but there's certainly added cost and added risk to that approach. We talked about the interest rate risk, future potential changes to interest rates, the added expenses of financing two bonds. You'd have a second bond financing at an estimated added cost of $500,000, $500,000 that is, for each of the two bond issuances. And again, with the batteries, if you're to bond that separately, those have a shorter asset life, so depending upon how you finance, you would end up potentially with a shorter bond repayment term. That ultimately ends up potentially having an impact on rates. That would need to be studied through a COSA, but because you're paying it off quicker, that impacts rates sooner. You have a potentially more rate shock with that than you would with a longer bond term. And then, lastly, the issue of deferring the decision does create a big question mark around what Glendale's overall plan is, and that will have an impact on the bond, the bond market. The questions that may arise as to what is Glendale's plan to supply reliable energy, bondholders will be looking at that, rating agencies, underwriters, so that too will have an impact on the bond financing. I would like to add that we do have bond counsel available tonight on the meeting. We have Victor Schu and Stepan Hapian from Norton Roseville, right? So if there are more detailed bond questions, they are also available to step in and answer those as well. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the next slide.
So, we're going to try to obtain replacement power and energy during this, during the transition. So with, with a lack of power, with a lack of commitment to the project, we have companies that, or cities, utilities, are reluctant to help us. In 2018, we had agreed with Los Angeles to assist us during the construct, demolition and construction phase, and when there was no commitment, they removed their commit, they removed their commitment to assist us. So having the commitment by council would definitely allow us to be able to procure that needed energy during the gap. As time starts to progress, things start to get tighter. The RPS requirements go up for every, every utility, and things start to tighten. So there's retirements, the Diablo Canyon retirement is, is a substantial hit to the California resources. That's 10% of California resources, the ones through cooler retirements, the penetration of the intermittent resources, and what I mean by that is when the wind, when we get more and more wind, the wind is blowing, then when it stops, you need to have an offsetting generator to then pick up that load. So as things are starting to retire, that intermittency becomes more problematic, so people hold on to their, their regulating units more and more, so it becomes much more difficult. So as we start to progress and we get into the 2026, 2027 era, we're going to have a harder and harder time to procure that energy.
These are some preliminary, and they're not negotiated, no one's prices in terms of what we think the impacts of the delay would be. On the left side are costs that we would incur by, by the delay. On, on the right side are costs that if you decide to proceed ahead and do the foundation work to maintain the existing schedule, these, these are the estimated costs of what we would have to commit to do, to prepare for all five engines, not knowing how many engines we would end up actually building. So as you can see, there are some substantial costs involved. These are some additional costs that we just need to be aware of. And I think as we're all aware of, we've been in a very low interest rate environment, and I think the Fed has made it very clear that the intent is to raise interest rates. So as time goes on, there's a much higher probability that interest rates are going to go up. All the contracts, because of the length of time that's involved in them, have CPI inflationary causes in them. In delaying the Wartzilla engines, we expect them to be repriced. Understand, some people have differing views about the merits of the Wartzilla engines, but I would just like to point out that there is a lot of people in the world that look at the Wartzilla engines as being a very appropriate solution to try and address, one, transitioning to a cleaner fossil fuel, natural gas instead of coal and oil, and secondly, to have a fast responding, flexible resource. As, you know, what Wartzilla said, for example, all of their 2022 production is already sold. We face the issue of potential code changes. You know, all the work, I mean, a real example, when we started this project with Siemens Repower, was the 2016 version of the California Building Code. All the geotechnical work was done in accordance with those code requirements. Fast forward, the California Building Code gets updated every three years. All right, so the geotechnical work that had been done for the 2016, not all of it, but a substantial portion of it had to be reperformed to comply with the new 2019 California Building Code. That was, just the geotech studies alone, was a $250,000 hit to the project. All right, but out of that came additional requirements. There's a substantial change in the CBC regarding liquefaction, because one of the underlying codes, American Society of Civil Engineering Code, was updated. So potential code changes, we have, the CBC is being updated again. It'll be issued later this year and adopted by Glendale likely at the beginning of next year. Proceeding with the contracts now, this year, standard procedure in, in the construction practice, construction businesses, you tie the codes to the site, to when the contracts are signed, because everyone needs to have certainty about what they're building to. So if we delay the time when we're signing those contracts, we're going, we are with Wartzilla, are going to face another change with the California Building Code. I can't tell you, sitting here exactly, you know, whether that's, I doubt that's going to be as significant as what happened between 2016 and 2019, but it is a risk. And it's not just the California Building Code. The ASME, American Society of Mechanical Engineers, they publish numerous codes. One example is power piping code. That gets updated every couple of years. It's getting updated later this year. So these are real concerns. Unit 9 will be the only local thermal generation, and by that, it's dispatchable any time of the day, 24/7, 365 days a week, a year, and it provides 48 megawatts. We clearly want to minimize the length of time that a city that's got an average load of 112 megawatts, a peak load of roughly 350 megawatts, and is heavily dependent on transmission, is only relying on Unit 9. And as Mark's already talked about, as you go forward in time, particularly with the Diablo Canyon retirement taking 10% of California's clean energy off the table, you know, lining up the replacement energy and capacity during the construction project just gets more difficult as you go forward in time. And lastly, as we move forward in time, you know, there's changes in project teams happen. It's a part of life, and the longer we stretch this out, there's this greater potential for loss of continuity.
So, pursuing local DER, and for, for people that don't know what DER is, Distributed Energy Resources, we use the virtual power plant, energy efficiency, and demand response as the subsets of DER. Glendale is always looking for opportunities to do that, so it's not an either-or situation. We're looking for the Wartzilla Alternative 7 to move forward, but that doesn't mean that we're not looking forward to engaging in DER opportunities. A couple of months ago, or a month ago, we've been directed, staff has been directed to modify our virtual power plant exposure to maybe make it a smaller project. This pursuing more DER counteracts that directive. We presently have Franklin as a demand response of 10 megawatts over four years, and like we have said before, we've asked them to give us as much as we possibly, as they possibly could give us, as long as they were going to suffer liquidated damage in the event that they couldn't do it. Same with Willdan Energy for energy efficiency. That's almost nine megawatts over seven years. They were trying to be as aggressive as possible. We don't believe in allowing, allowing other companies to compete for the same customers. So if Franklin is the demand response company that we're engaging with, we don't want to have competing demand response companies that just confuse our customers. We want to have a very clear message to the residents of Glendale, and we want to make it an easy-to-understand concept so that they engage in these So here's an energy efficiency comparison to California utilities. There's 40 utilities in the area, and I don't expect everybody to read every one of those utilities, but you can see Glendale is number four, is number four. It's Los Angeles, Roseville, Zusa, and Glendale, and that's, that's pretty aggressive. So the idea of us not being aggressive enough for energy efficiency shows that we are on the very aggressive side. And when you add to this that the Willdan, or the Lime Energy, as it was called prior, but it's the Willdan Energy now, if you were to add that contract to these numbers, we would actually be number one on this list. So now let's take a look at the comparison of our neighboring utilities for demand response. It's a pretty boring graph. Burbank and Pasadena don't have demand response programs, zero. Los Angeles has 1%, and Glendale is over 2%. Now, we're, we're looking at this as a percent of load, and when we say 10%, Glendale, that is, or, I'm sorry, 2.9, I can't read the number, sorry.
2.89.
Yes, yes, sir. 2.89, that's 10 megawatts, and that's our Franklin demand response. Los Angeles has 65 megawatts of demand response, but their peak load is 6,500. So when you make that in relation to their peak, they're only 1%. If you take, if you take a look at the residential and commercial solar, Los Angeles is at 7%, and Glendale is at 6%. So we're right in line with an aggressive utility. And I was just notified that Los Angeles had an RFP, I mean, LDWP had an RFP for DER, and they accepted 29.5 megawatts in 2020. Of that, 13 megawatts is going to be the virtual power plant, and we're looking at our virtual power plant of 2025/25, which is substantially larger and way larger if you consider that a part of a percentage of load. Go to the next slide, please. Oh, here we are. Adding 50 megawatts of DER, like I said, we are looking at all opportunities for doing this. Adding 50 megawatts of additional DER is a very aggressive goal. Our original proposal is aggressive. This makes it even more so. DERs are not necessarily dispatchable. The virtual power plant is, because we have the ability to combine all those batteries and through a flip of a switch or a press of a button, we're able to dispatch that energy. But demand, our demand response program is not a dispatchable option. People can opt out of it, and if you can opt out of it, then it can't be considered a load reduction for planning purposes. It's very expensive. The DER component is very expensive. Our virtual power plant is expensive. Now, keep in mind that the virtual power plant is a different beast than a utility-scale solar project that we can procure from out of the area. So we are talking about two different types of projects, but nonetheless, it's still extremely expensive. And our DER is very limited in the amount of energy that it, that it can actually produce or supply. It might have a capacity number that's high, let's say 50 megawatts, but that would be 50 megawatts for two hours for a 100-megawatt-hour battery or 100-megawatt-hour DER program. That's very different than having a 50-megawatt generator that can produce 24/7 in the event of an emergency.
So no presentation would be complete without a pretty graph. So what this shows, the red dots are the same four days in August from 2017 that have been scaled up to match the 2030 P95 loads that were in the IRP. This heavy black line is the average of those four curves. This is how many megawatts that Glendale was consuming across the 24 hours of the day, and this is the average. So note that, like, this day was lower, this day's higher. You'll see a second black line here. The, the area between those two black lines, that's the energy that's being used to charge the 75-megawatt, 300-megawatt-hour battery energy storage system. So let's go through some of the other things that are in here. So net transmission. This, we have to, we have to cover contingencies. So this is the total amount of transmission that's available to Glendale, which is in, in the future, 2027, which is 272 megawatts, less 100 megawatts for the loss of the N minus one, less 64 megawatts for the loss of the N minus one, minus one. So that nets out a little less than 150 megawatts. On top of that, we have a steady 11 megawatts from Shoal Canyon. On top of that, we have Eland Storage, solar and storage. This is a very, it's for August. This is a very generous contribution from Eland. If you do the math, this was like at a 40% capacity factor, which is a very high capacity factor for solar. One of the things that we included was we took the virtual power plant and we multiplied it by three, okay, because one of the suggestions from two weeks ago was that we add another 50 megawatts of distributed energy. We took that as another, as 50 more megawatts of virtual power plant. So in total here, in this area here, is a 75-megawatt virtual power plant. The guarantee on what Sunrun has The guarantee on what Sunrun has proposed was 25 megawatts, 50 and 1/2 megawatt hours. We actually modeled this as 25 megawatts and 143 megawatt hours, three times their guarantee, and then multiplied that by three. And so you can see, this starts early in the morning and ramps up, and then the battery is discharging here, and we exhaust the battery here at the end of the day. And then here is four hours of 10 megawatts of demand response, and this was set at the peak. At the blue here is Unit 9. And as you can see, Unit 9 is having to run 24/7 and part of the time to help charge the battery. Because on a peak-load day, when you're having, if you have to cover all your contingency reserves, you don't have enough import capacity to charge the battery. If everything is well in the world and there are no contingency issues, then yeah, there's enough transmission and you can charge the battery with transmission. But if something happens and you're having to cover contingencies, that's not the case. And that's what we have to plan for. Here are the five Wartzillas. And I'm going to come back to that in a moment. And then on top here, here we are, is discharging the battery. And we discharged it all the way to zero to help trim the peak, just like we dispatched these other resources to help trim the peak. So this was all arranged, and we had the benefit of 2020 hindsight, okay? As we dispatched the resources here through the day, we knew exactly what the rest of the day was going to look like. So it was fine, in that case, to start discharging the battery at 11 o'clock in the morning, knowing what the rest of the day was going to be like. In real life, you probably wouldn't do that because you don't know what's going to happen at the end of the day. And when you think ahead in the future to the addition of electric vehicles, this load curve is probably going to change because it's probably going to stay higher longer because when people get home, 5, 6 o'clock, and here's where the peak is. It's at 5 o'clock in the afternoon, well after the solar peak at 12 o'clock. What are they going to do? They're going to plug in their car and start charging it. So we expect this load curve to extend out. But look what happens with the Wartzilla engines, and we did everything possible to minimize running the Wartzillas. But what happens here at 9 o'clock at night? The battery's completely discharged. The renewable resources with batteries are completely discharged except for Eland. And the Wartzilla generation goes to 93 megawatts. All five engines are running. All right? You look here, we vary from two to five engines over the course of the day. And then at midnight, the last engine comes off, but Unit 9 still continues to run. This is the best case, and I just remind you that we dispatched this to match the average. If we had had to meet the highest peak day, you can just see how much additional area that we would have had to cover. And, you know, where is that energy coming from? Well, you would have had to run the Wartzillas more to help meet that peak load. So this is why we believe that five Wartzillas are required. And if you take away 2/3 of this, because the city currently is negotiating how much of a virtual power plant to have that's 1/3 of this, you can see that the gap just gets even bigger. So like I say, this is with 2020 hindsight. And I'll let Mark talk to a little bit of the realities when you're dispatching in real time, how you might dispatch some of these resources.
Thank you. So there's a couple of things. EV charging, if EV charging doesn't create the peak further in the evening, it will definitely increase the load or our obligation at the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 o'clock hour. And if that were the case, then less energy would be able to be charged into the battery. So moving the charging of electric vehicles, really, it hurts either way. It's not a panacea. So you can't charge it at 2 o'clock in the morning and say you'll be fine. And the DER, the local, the virtual power plant, that's the best-case scenario on the DER. If you have demand response, there's a very limited amount of time that you can call on that demand response. And if you have energy efficiency, the energy efficiency, it is what it is. It's not dispatchable. So when we looked at the DER component, we put it in the virtual power plant because the virtual power plant is the best bang for the buck. It is dispatchable, so we were able to dispatch it. As a dispatcher, as a power plant operator, and as a marketer, you don't know when this peak is going to happen. You have an idea, and you know that if you're in a four-day heat wave, that the last day is going to be hotter than the first day, even if the temperature is slightly less because everything is heated up, and you don't get a chance to cool off the houses, so your air conditioning is running. And then you get people that are tired of not putting their air conditionings on, so they put their air conditioning on it. So it's very, it's a very difficult position to be if you're going to have the best-case scenario barely meet your peak. Because one instance of a problem and you're in trouble. If transmission gets de-rated, which is normal, you'll get a problem. And if you can't find 100% of the energy needed to transmit on the transmission line, you'll have a problem, which is very, very common during these heat waves. So I stress that this is the best-case scenario. This is not a scenario that I would feel comfortable with as a dispatcher or as a marketer, trader. And this would be all hands on deck at a power plant to make sure that everything runs and that there's no events that cause the unit to be tripped or battery to be fully discharged. And remember, here, the battery is fully discharged. So in summary, the modified Alternative 7 adds time. We've seen that it adds cost. The complexity is much more difficult, and there's unknowns that we have to deal with as far as risk. We always looking to pursue and purchase distributed energy resources and renewable energy outside because we had indicated that our goal is to bring 100% of our transmission using renewable energy. So we're diligently looking for best fit in our portfolio so that in the event that we had that graph in the previous slide, we can bring 100% renewable energy in and not have to try to procure brown energy or null energy, as they call it, which wouldn't have a carbon factor to it. Local reliability and dispatchable resources is something that we need to have in the city in order for us to move forward. This portfolio is a very progressive portfolio. It is something that other utilities will look at in awe. It gives us the ability to be flexible while it also allows us to be able to minimize the thermal generation for peak-load days or contingency reserve. GWP strongly recommends not pausing and delaying Alternative 7. And we're available to answer questions.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I do have 12 callers in front of me on Comrex. I have another 55 in the queue downstairs. How long would you like me to give these callers, and when do you want me to stop taking new callers?
Let's give them one minute each and put a cap at 90 minutes. And whoever's in the queue after 90 minutes can remain, but we won't take any more after that. Give them an hour and a half.
That would be 9:30 today.
I think everybody deserves to have a chance to speak, so, yes. Okay, I'm going to ask my colleagues if they have any questions. Let's not give comments. Let's ask questions. If not, we'll listen to the callers. We'll get started with those.
I have a question. Yes.
Councilmember Najarian, go ahead.
So council's action was to certify the EIR two weeks ago, correct?
Correct.
Have we filed our notice of determination?
Councilman Najarian, yes, we have.
And the statute of limitations for a challenge to the EIR is 30 days after the NOD is filed?
That's correct.
We were, you know, several callers, I know Kathy Yurka, actually in writing, as well as perhaps the gentleman from Earth Justice, said that they are going to be challenging the EIR on, I guess one of them was historical resources ground and the other one was something else. What does a challenge to the EIR mean to this entire schedule that we've seen in front of us? As I understand, the challenge to the EIR, even, you know, you said they have no grounds or no successful grounds. That can take a year, can't it?
Councilman Najarian, standard, sequel litigation, writ of mandate, probably take a year. However, absent, you know, any request for immediate stay of the project, which would be, the onus would be on any petition or bring, the city would be legally entitled to move forward. There would be risks that would be part of the bonding process that the bondholders are made aware of, and then that might affect some of the bond details. But there's no restriction on the city moving forward with the project simply by virtue of the fact that a sequel lawsuit is filed.
Well, except one of the grounds is to preserve the power station structure, and I don't think we can go anywhere. I mean, that's step one in all this work, I think, is, I mean, aside for some engineering, but in terms of actual work, it's that power station. So are we thinking about that? Do we think that's a valid concern? Because everything that we're talking about now, all this urgency that Mr. Tateosian and Mark Young have put forth are going to be moot if we're stuck in a sequel litigation. That puts a stay on any action to stop the demolition of the power station.
Councilman Najarian, it's a little hard to speculate because, you know, lawsuit hasn't been filed. We haven't, if, we wouldn't know what the law, we have an idea, obviously, what some of the claims might be, but we would have to look at it and assess it and then provide the council our best opinion.
So that's out there right now as sort of a possibility, but we don't know what form it might take, if it takes form at all. Correct, okay. That was just one, you know, as we're thinking about this and these timelines, that's something that, you know, would be a total monkey wrench into even the best-laid plans, but that might not come to fruition. And I'm not encouraging it either, but I'm just, for our discussion, we have to be aware of that. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions for now? Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, let's see. We just went through a 45-minute presentation, so there's going to be a lot. Let's go all the way back to, let's see, the beginning here. You talk about the pile driving, right? So there is no, nothing that would prevent us from going ahead and doing all the pile driving based on the full Wartzilla project. Is that right?
That would require two mobilizations of Wartzilla. One to come in as originally planned at the end of site improvement and start driving piles.
Okay, but we could do that. We could drive those piles so there's not going to be any risk to the Tesla battery system. Is that right?
There's a cost associated with that. It's driving the piles, it's the foundation work.
We're going to face that cost anyway. We're going to drive the piles anyway. So...
Can I add, can I chime in there a little bit? Councilman Brotman, besides the cost issues, we'd have to come to some agreement with Wartzilla to mobilize that way. There are probably additional financial costs associated with getting them to agree to that. And then the other issue is, in just our preliminary discussions with my staff, it would seem that that cost could not be bonded for without having committed to the project. You might be able to recover them at a subsequent bonding, but initially, the city would be responsible for those costs. That's my understanding, and I'll ask Ms. Codenas if she has any additional information. So there's an additional cost to having to front that cost associated with that if you're not, if you haven't committed to the actual, the remainder of the project.
Right, okay. But from an engineering point of view, we could do that, and it would remove any concern about affecting the battery system. I think that's, that seems to be pretty clear.
I hesitate, I hesitate with what you say, removing any concern, all right? So let us presume that we go down that path. The risk you run is that between the time you install the piles and whether you do the pile caps and the foundations or not, we have the CBC changing, okay? And that introduces another change that might affect the work that you have already done. You know, secondly, what, secondly, what you're saying...
When would we be driving the, when would we be driving the piles under, if we went ahead with Alternative 7? When would that be happening?
As I showed on the schedule, we would be driving those piles in '24. But what happens...
In 2024?
But what happens, Mr. Brotman, is that that original schedule was predicated on we're signing a contract with Wartzilla today that locks in the 2019 California Building Code for the duration of the project, all right? And to do what you're asking presumes that Wartzilla is willing to enter into a contract with us, all right? Not knowing that they're going to sell any engines at the end of the day, and that's their business. So the issue for them becomes whether do we want to commit the resources to a project knowing that there's active opposition on the city council level against any Wartzilla engines versus taking those same resources and devoting them to projects with people who want to do something? And so that is a real concern from my perspective.
And there's no other firm that can do that work?
When we structured this project, the reason we took the Power Island approach was because of the Grayson geotechnical issues, okay? We put a power island together. So Wartzilla was responsible from the ground up. Our obligation to them is to prepare the site in a way that meets their geotechnical requirements. Those requirements are in the demolition, site improvement, RFP that the bidders are responding to, to do that work, all right? At that point, we turn it over to Wartzilla. And the reason we want Wartzilla responsible from the ground up, the piles up through their engines, is these are large engines, just like your car engine, which is a much smaller scale. It vibrates, right? Because it's a reciprocating engine. We wanted Wartzilla responsible for that complete path. We would, really don't want to go down the path of having one entity responsible for the foundation, having Wartzilla responsible from the foundations up. If we have issues down the road, then the city ends up in the middle of a finger-pointing contest between Wartzilla, it's your foundations, and the foundation people saying, no, it's your engines. In between the engines and the foundation is a base isolation system that has to be designed to match the site-specific seismic that came out of the new Geotech. So it's not a straightforward, just, you know, give this piece of the pie to this firm and give this other piece of the pie to Wartzilla. There was a lot of thought that went into how this project was structured and how the contracts were negotiated. And where we are right now with Wartzilla is contract negotiations are on hold until, I mean, there's, from their perspective, there's no point in them continuing to negotiate a contract with City of Glendale, given what they hear out of these city council meetings.
Sure, well, that makes sense. Okay. So I appreciate all that. So in this, in the... in the presentation, you talked about a nine-month delay. You talked about going to three, from three to four summers without the, I guess, the capability of, I guess, in the, in the early years before the batteries were in, meeting our own load, I think, and then in the, in the, towards the back end of that, it would be meeting our reserve requirements. How are we gonna, how are we gonna cover those three years? Because this would mean three to four, right? So how, how are we going to cover those three years right now? What's our plan?
Our plan is to ask for assistance from other utilities in order for us to get that gap taken care of. And they're not, they're not seeing a commitment to council, of council to actually do it, just like Los Angeles rescinded their, their, their assistance because they didn't see us acting in 2018.
So you're going to go to LA? Is it LA? Or who, who do you think is going to be providing this assistance?
Well, I'd be going to counterparties for sure. I, I, I'm not at liberty to say who I'm going to go to right at this moment because I haven't spoke to them directly yet, but when I spoke to them indirectly or unofficially, they've said, well, when you have a project, we could talk.
Okay. So if we sat down with LA and they were willing to, to do four or five years for us, would that change things? If they were willing to do it on the understanding that we're going through this process, we're looking at additional DERs, we might be looking at participating early on in a hydrogen opportunity. Let's say they're willing to accommodate and give us five years. Would that change things for, for you?
Having assistance from Los Angeles definitely changes things for me, but I've been in contact with Los Angeles on a consistent basis, and I haven't, I haven't heard of any assistance like that.
Okay. I mean, I have, and I think we need to bring all the parties together in the same room and, and try to run this to ground because, well, we'll, we'll have to talk about it another time, but I think there's an opportunity around that. Okay. On the bond financing, you talk about two times the bond financing cost. By my calculation, that's like less than a half a percent of the project cost. Isn't that right?
I won't dispute that. It's $500,000 to me certainly is a lot of money, but it's the council's discretion to spend that or not.
But it's something like 0.3% or 0.4% of the project cost. I just, you know, want to point that out. Rating agencies, bondholders being concerned with lack of commitment to reliable energy plan, I think they would be even more concerned about lack of commitment to moving to clean energy, but that's a comment, not a question. Thing about Willdan, I mean, you taught, you mentioned, I mean, there are just so many things I wrote down here. I'm not going to go through them all, and I have comments later, but Willdan or Lime originally proposed twice of what we ended up contracting with them, and we cut them back. So I think to say that we're doing as much as, as we possibly can on energy efficiency, that's just one example, I just think that's patently wrong. I mean, I got that from them directly.
If I can respond to that just quickly.
When we first started negotiating, they complained that we were cutting them back.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Godinez has a response, Madam Mayor.
I just wanted to note, because I was involved in those negotiations pretty heavily, we had extensive negotiations about guarantees, and that's where the rubber meets the road, right? It's one thing to say you can do more, it's another thing to guarantee, because we are counting on that energy efficiency so that we can have a smaller repower size. So that's the maximum amount we were able to get guaranteed by Lime, now Willdan.
Okay. I think there's a lot more room to go there, but anyway, let's, I don't really have questions. I have a lot of comments, but we'll come back to those.
Shall we go to the phones then? Mr. Councilmember Brotman, you can make your comments later. Okay. All right. I just want to remind those callers that they have one minute. This is not a repeal of the final EII, EIR or the demolition. Those have already been approved. Please keep your comments only in respect to modifying Alternative 7. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Hajimi.
Jordan Henry, you have one minute. Jordan, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, thank you for taking my call. I believe the construction schedule, the procurement for the Tesla Megapack will be in 2022 and then actually deployed in the operational in 2023 or 2024. So Tesla is coming out with new battery technology very soon. In just the next couple of years, their batteries will be 56% cheaper and 54% more powerful. So if I bought a Tesla today with current battery tech and it had a range of 300 miles and I spent 50K, in like three or four years, that same Tesla would have cost $25, $30,000 with a range of 450 miles. So you can see the cost effectiveness of roughing into a battery tech like this that's changing very rapidly is kind of risky. I totally understand the desire to do so, to reduce carbon footprint.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
But you're, you're dealing with very fast-paced changes.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Olivia Ramirez. Olivia? Mark Optian. Mark?
Hello, thank you, Mayor Devine and council members. My wife and I are Glendale residents and homeowners for over 25 years. I watched the council meeting on February 25 and followed very closely the discussion of the Grayson repowering. My wife and I fully support Councilman Brotman's proposals to negotiate a more favorable agreement with LADWP and to explore more sustainable solutions than natural gas. But we face global climate change and GWP's proposal does not truly respond to that hazard. You know, it's been said that when all you have is a hammer, everything looks like a nail. So I'm asking you, please be the change, look for a better tool, a tool more sustainable than the Wartzila hammer. Our children and our grandchildren deserve it. Thank you.
Daniella Lamone. Daniella?
Yes, hi.
Go ahead. You have one minute.
Good, okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am a resident of the Woodbury neighborhood of Glendale, and I'm calling to say that I support Dan Brotman's proposal. That was also seconded at the time by Aron Najarian. Thank you.
Kate Unger, you have one minute. Kate, go ahead.
Thank you very much. This is Kate Unger with GEC. We are faced with two choices right now. Take some time to investigate ways to avoid a huge capital investment in pollution-emitting equipment or close the door on that possibility. Staff has given you plenty of reasons to close the door. Why? GWP wants the full gas project. It's that simple. Everything they've said is an effort to advocate for that, and their answers to council questions are like a hostile witness. So it's up to council to weigh the considerations and decide the best course of action. We know the risks of moving forward with the project are a large financial commitment to capacity that will sit idle most of the time, and when it does operate, it will emit greenhouse gases, carbon monoxide particulates, and other pollution. It's not a good investment for Glendale, and the best thing to do is avoid it. Please take the time to look for ways to do that. Keep the door open. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Victoria Kirshenbaum. Victoria, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I want to commend the Glendale Environmental Coalition on their terrific presentation to council in February on the Grayson Repowering Project. Glendale's legacy should not be that it built the last gas plant in the state of California, a plant that will pump out greenhouse gas emissions for decades to come. I urge the council to support Councilman Dan Brotman's motion. Thank you.
Karen Brew, you have one minute. Karen, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Karen Bro, and that's quite all right, everybody does it. And I live in the Verdugo Woodlands West, and I want to let you know that I support Dan Brotman's proposal, the same proposal that was supported by Aron Najarian. Thank you.
Jackie Gish, you have one minute. Go ahead, Jackie.
Hi, my name is Jackie Gish, and I'm a resident of Glendale. I want to voice my opposition to the five engines the city is considering putting at Grayson. First of all, this plant will contribute to increasing rates for GWP customers. One cannot consider Grayson in the baseline and say it won't increase rates, and other contracted items will cause rate increases, any more than we as individuals can say food is in our baseline budget and rent is not. If the plant is only used for emergencies, then the cost per megawatt hour will be higher than any other power. Second, the climate crisis is real, and any gas-fired power contributes to it. Third, the city can use its expertise and that of its residents to come up with clean ways to generate more power, and GEC has suggested many ideas. Surely GWP can adopt and implement some of them quickly. Finally, the city council needs to have direct conversations with LA officials to try to resolve the reserve issue between the two city utilities. I support Dan Brotman's motion, Councilman Brotman's motion, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Gish. Glenn Webb, you have one minute. Go ahead, Glenn.
Yes, thank you, council members. My name is Glenn Webb, and I want to point out that the 72 megawatts of new transmission that we have recently acquired, plus the 25 megawatts of HELEN, almost completely negates the need for this 93 megawatts of gas-powered engines. I have submitted analysis and charts and so forth to the council on many occasions, and I also want to point out that I'm available to discuss this with any of the councilmen or the staff of Glendale Water and Power at any time. And I support Dan Brotman's motion to delay the actual procurement of these gas engines, which undoubtedly will be the last gas-powered power plant developed in the state of California. Thank you very much.
Stephanie Skersh. Stephanie?
That's okay. I'm a 21-year resident of Glendale, and whenever I hear, I can't help this but say this, whenever I hear dire warnings from GWP stating what might happen if the project approval is delayed, I immediately think of GWP's delay in delivering a PIR. If that had been delivered on a more timely basis, this discussion might have happened and been settled months ago. In my, my mind, GWP's delay impacted the current situation. I hope this council will support Dan Brotman's proposal to hold off on approving new gas burning engines and work to reduce or eliminate the need for them while moving forward with other important parts of the project. We've recently seen especially how vile, how volatile natural gas costs are. Just one of the many reasons it makes sense to invest in clean energy technologies rather than spend hundreds of millions of dollars on new fossil fuel equipment. I urge council to support Dan Brotman's proposal. Thank you.
Joemi Wilson, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable council members. My name is Joemi Wilson. My husband and I live in the Glenville neighborhood of Glendale, and we're calling to respectfully request that you support Councilmember Dan Brotman's proposal that was also supported by Councilmember Aron Najarian. Thank you very much.
Valerie Gardner. Valerie, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Valerie Gardner, and my husband and I have been Glendale residents now for 21 years. I also stand with the GEC and want, would like to ask the council to please support Councilmember Dan Brotman's proposal that was also supported by Aron Najarian. Thank you.
Jessica Vo, you have one minute. Jessica, go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, good evening to everyone. My children attend Franklin Elementary, which is near Grayson, and I would like to ask that you support Dan Brotman's proposal that was also supported by Councilmember Aron Najarian. Thank you.
Matt Yance, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Hi there, I'm a Glendale resident, and I support Dan Brotman. I stand with the GEC, and I'd ask for you to support his modifications to Alternative 7 as well. Thank you.
Deborah Burchett, go ahead. You have one minute.
Hello, thank you, Mayor Devine and members of the city council. I am hopeful you will support Dan Brotman's motion, as it is important in the next phases of the Grayson modification. I understand there are many issues to consider in this complex decision, but I feel there should be more opportunities for our city to embrace clean energy technologies, including offering more incentive for us individually to have solar energy on our homes that we could help with the power need. Thank you.
Katie McAfee? Katie?
Hello?
Yeah.
Hello?
We can, go ahead, Katie, you have one minute.
Okay. My name is Katie McAfee, and I've lived in Glendale for the past 28 years. I just want to say that I support Councilmember Brotman's motion. Thank you.
Eric Hovland, you have one minute. Go ahead, Eric.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, for giving me a chance to comment. I am a Glendale resident and have been for 25 years. Adopt Councilmember Brotman's modification to delay the fossil fuel engines purchased and get GWP to work harder toward a better solution. The climate crisis is already here, putting Californians out of their homes due to fires that burn every year. The potential for clean energy within the borders of Glendale has not been tapped. We need more RFPs to get clean energy projects going at commercial properties, city properties, and residential homes. Proposed installation of fossil fuel engines is expensive, and these engines are beholden to expensive fossil fuels that fluctuate in price. The profits of those fuels often go into the pockets of desperate. For example, Russia is a major exporter of natural gas. Using fossil fuels is not energy independent. Fossil fuel engines will produce air pollution, will put carbon into the atmosphere, helping accelerate the climate crisis, find a clean energy solution for Glendale. Thank you.
Courtney Smith, you have one minute. Courtney, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Courtney Smith. I'm a resident of Glendale. I'm calling because California, California's February's, January's, December's, November's, they're all way hotter than they need to be. We have wildfires running rampant in the state, all on the West Coast, and this is something that has been expedited by the expanded use of fossil fuels, and it's going to take a lot of work to backtrack and make, make the earth a safer place for all of us. And I know everyone says that they care about the future and they care about their children. If these are not empty words, then the city of Glendale needs to work hard to go against using fossil fuels and find renewable resources. With this, I urge you to support Dan Brotman's proposal that was supported by Aron Najarian. Thank you for your time. Please make the right decision for all of us and our future.
Leah Campara. Leah, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I've been a Glendale resident for 11 years, and my husband even more. And we are calling tonight to, to tell that we, we urge you to consider the green energies for our future because of the, the pollution, because of the change. And we support Dan Brotman's motion that is supported also by Aron Najarian. So good evening to everybody, and thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Catherine Hidalco, you have one minute. Go ahead, Catherine.
Hello, council members. My name is Catherine. I am 16 and I have lived in Glendale for five years now. I currently attend Alverna Heights Academy High School, and I would like to speak on behalf of my younger siblings, myself, and the future children of Glendale. Please approve Dan Brotman's proposal that was supported by Please approve Dan Brotman's proposal that was supported by Aron Najarian and here's why. Why spend $260 million on a project that is obsolete? Instead, invest that money in clean energy, technology, and conservation. Think about the quality of life you are leaving for the generation. Grayson Power Plant receives significant amount of air pollution, which in turn causes cancer, asthma, heart disease, and growing children like myself. We want to live a healthy life and I want to leave it a better place. Give the challenge of climate change that will already be tough to do. Please don't make it harder. I want to stay in Glendale. My parents' owner with tired hair syndrome, all that Glendale has to offer.
Thank you Catherine. Thank you. Patrick Deenan? Patrick, go ahead, you have one minute.
Good evening, Mayor Devine and council members. Thanks for taking my call. I'm Patrick Deenan, a resident of Adams Hill and father of two young girls. I urge you to pass Dan Brotman's proposal supported by Aron Najarian. I watched the entire presentation tonight and it just seems like there's a lot of speculation and fear mongering on GWP's side. Delaying nine months is not a very long time in regards to spending almost a quarter billion dollars. We are actually running out of time though in our fight against climate change. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you Patrick. Graham Johnson? You have one minute. Go ahead.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, my name's Graham and I'm a Glendale resident. I stand with the GEC and want to support Councilmember Dan Brotman's proposal that was supported by Aron Najarian and I would love you to as well. Thank you.
Jeffrey Volmer? You have one minute. Jeffrey, go ahead.
My name is Jeffrey Volmer. I'm a resident of Verdugo Woodlands. I support Mr. Brotman's proposal. It's a good faith compromise that obligates GWP to seek prudent options for clean power generation. I support the proposal and I definitely think that the full council should support it also. Thank you very much.
Bethany Johnson? You have one minute. Bethany, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Bethany and I work and live near the Grayson site and I support Councilmember Brotman's proposal, which was supported by Councilmember Najarian. Thank you.
Melissa King? You have one minute. Melissa, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Melissa King and my husband and I are homeowners in the Verdugo Viejo neighborhood. And I'm just calling because I support Councilmember Brotman's proposal that is also supported by Aron Najarian and I really hope the rest of the council will support it as well. Thank you.
Monica Campagna? Monica, go ahead, you have one minute. Monica?
Good evening, this is Monica Campagna with GEC and resident of the Riverside Rancho neighborhood in Glendale. I asked you also to support the proposal by Councilmember Brotman that was supported by Councilmember Najarian because it allows a path forward that aligns with what members of this community have been asking for for over four years now. Find ways to reduce or replace the gas engines, make clean energy projects your centerpiece, prioritize them in terms of budget and schedule. Staring down the barrel of climate change, the risks of not making the right, yes, often harder choices right now in cities like ours around the world will lead to a future that none of us want to imagine. We need to be the change we want to see and we need that right now. We need you to do this by setting the direction. GWP has been completely stuck on this 93 megawatts of gas for almost three years now. They shut down every attempt to adjust the size, scope, or even find ways to phase in the project. They need to be unstuck. Please support Brotman's motion and resolution tonight. And please don't let that be the end of it. Thank you.
Karen Lowe? You have one minute. Karen, go ahead.
Hi, I'm a resident of Rossmoyn. My family's lived here since 1995 and over the past four years, we have been battling with the GWP to even consider modifying this outrageous plan that they have for more turbines in a time of climate change. I have listened for the past hour to their presentation and concomitant people in support of it, but in the last few minutes, we heard Dan Brotman and Aron Najarian ask a few questions that expose the GWP's apparent lack of effort to try and explore other options. In other words, they've been stonewalling us for four years. So I support Dan Brotman's proposal that was also supported by Aron Najarian to reconsider this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you Karen. Diane Hong? You have one minute. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm Diane Hong. I'm a Glendale resident for 43 years up in Chevy Chase Canyon. I stand with the Glendale Environmental Coalition and want Glendale City Council to support Dan Brotman's motion. Thank you.
Diana Matsushima?
Thank you. I've been a resident of the Verdugo Woodlands area for over 30 years and I appreciate all your efforts, Mayor Devine and city council members, and I urge you to support Dan Brotman's proposal that was supported by Aron Najarian and looking forward to a clean climate, a cleaner climate.
Andrew Elias? Andrew, you have one minute. Go ahead. Andrew Elias? You have one minute, Andrew? Erin Dynan? You have one minute. Erin, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Devine and council members. My name is Erin Dynan. I live in Glendale in the Adams Hill neighborhood. I am a mother of two young girls, deeply concerned about the climate crisis, and I stand with the Glendale Environmental Coalition. I have solar panels on my home and I drive an electric car. I am urging you to please support Councilmember Dan Brotman's proposal, which is so clearly a reasonable compromise to move forward. We need progressive clean energy solutions to this crisis that ensure environmental and financial sustainability. We know better. Please do better. Thank you for your time.
Victoria Valentine? You have one minute. Go ahead Victoria.
Yes, hi. I believe Sacramento is dictating about the green energy. I am calling with joy to Mr. Quintero, Mr. Quintero, the council member, that his vision for Glendale's Grayson will live, work, and shine another 100 years. Please do not demolish the foundation. I'm a nobody, but I know that no code will apply if you keep the old foundation. You cannot replace that massive concrete. They don't make it anymore. You need, Glendale Water and Power has the land there, at the river, at the border with LA DWP. They need to get together and do whatever is necessary for solar energy needs like Sacramento is dictating. And if you let me, please bury that curse, the curse, into the trash with the rest of the trash.
Thank you Ms. Valentine.
For future generations.
Thank you Ms. Valentine.
Thank you.
Rick Stern? You have one minute. Rick, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Rick Stern. I live in the Verdugo Woodlands and I've lived in Glendale for 30 years. Climate change has brought on devastating fires and dryness in California. The Verdugo Woodlands and other Glendale neighborhoods bordering the Verdugo Mountains, Wildlands are at a particular risk. Climate change is aggravated by the use of fossil fuels and please support Dan Brotman's proposal that was supported by Aron Najarian. Thank you very much.
Paul Brillheimer? Paul, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Paul Brillheimer, a 35-year resident of Glendale, Adams Hill for 30. I'm asking you to please enact Councilmember Brotman's motion to modify Alternative Seven. All of the issues that have been brought up by staff are smaller concerns than the issue of wasting hundreds of millions of dollars on equipment that we may not need or may not even be able to use. And they're smaller than the overall issue of climate change and especially now of fossil fuel dependence. I'd also like to address one specific concern that was raised, that about people plugging in their electric cars when they get home from work in the evening. I've been an EV driver for the past six years and I can tell you that EVs are very high-tech devices and they can be programmed to charge not right when you plug them in, but to charge late at night, which is what most, all EV drivers do. Thank you very much.
Michelle Reyes? You have one minute. Michelle, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michelle Reyes. I'm a science teacher at Glendale High School and I'm just calling because I'm asking the council to support Dan Brotman's proposal that was supported by Councilman Aron Najarian. Thank you.
Martin Marufa? You have one minute. Go ahead.
Good evening, council. Good evening and thank you for this, but I'm really hoping I'm wrong. I've been in the generation industry for about 30 years, not always at a very high level. Lived through deregulation, transmission, freewheeling, talking about all these possibilities once through cooling. And I've seen the changes and I've seen the evolution and what's coming, but Councilman Brotman and Councilman Najarian, this proposal and this delay, I hope to gosh I'm wrong, right? I really do, but this is going to end up as a burden on your ratepayers. It's going to end up as a burden on you all if you don't go forward and fulfill your responsibility here to produce electricity for the citizens of Glendale. I'm just worried about what's going to happen. And again, we can talk in 10 years and see it all turns out, but I'm hoping I don't have to sit back and watch a train wreck. Thank you.
Bert Culver? You have one minute. Bert, go ahead.
Good evening, council members. I'm calling in tonight in support of delaying the purchase of the Wardzilla engines. The power from this plant is very expensive. It's twice as expensive as a home rooftop solar and will have a profound negative effect on Glendale's ability to go 100% clean in the future. I'd actually like the council to delay the vote on the motion and the resolution altogether. The majority of the city council is up for reelection in three months. We should delay the vote on this resolution and emotion until the new council is in place. This decision has a profound effect on the future of Glendale. We should let the voters decide by electing a new council that reflects the voters' will. Thank you and good night.
Debbie Bradshaw? You have one minute. Debbie, go ahead.
Hello, am I here?
Yes, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Debbie Bradshaw and my husband and I have been homeowners in Glendale for 11 years. My son attends school at Salem Lutheran and I want him to continue to thrive. There are cleaner energy models we can follow and this isn't one of them. Our city is already suffering from terrible pollution and with the increase in fire activity, it's only going to get worse. Please support Dan Brotman's motion and the Glendale Environmental Coalition that was supported by Aron Najarian. Thank you for your time. Good night.
Joanna Pringle? You have one minute. Joanna, go ahead. Joanna? Joanna? Filvana Sahakian? You have one minute.
Good evening. This is Filvana Sahakian, a resident of Montecito neighborhood of Glendale for 32 years. I stand with GEC and I wanted you to support Councilmember Brotman's proposal that was also supported by Aron Najarian. Thank you.
Amy Noel? Amy, go ahead, you have one minute.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for accepting my call. I've lived in the Adams Hill neighborhood of Glendale with my family for 17 years. I'm calling in support of Dan Brotman's proposal, which was seconded by Aron Najarian. I'd like to see Glendale invest in clean energy, not in fossil fuels. Thank you.
Joanna Pringle? Joanna? Andrew Elias? Andrew, go ahead, you have one minute. Andrew? Charles Kabagna? Charles?
Hello?
Charles, go ahead, you have one minute.
Okay, thank you. Hello, council members, good evening. My name is Charlie Campagna. I'm a homeowner and Glendale resident in the Rancho River South neighborhood. It's about a mile away from Grayson and my son also attends whole middle school, which is also close. I just want to let everybody know I stand with GEC and I want you to support Councilmember Mr. Brotman's motion that was also supported by Councilmember Mr. Najarian. I'm doing all that I can to reduce my carbon footprint, so I hope my utility can do the same. So, I appreciate you all and thank you very much for your time.
Elias Kalfayan? You have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I ask that you support Councilmember Dan Brotman's motion, which was also supported by Councilmember Aron Najarian. We need to address the climate crisis. Everyone needs to do as much as they can. We can do better here in Glendale. Thank you.
Tom Ettinger? Tom, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm a 34-year resident of Glendale and I feel this council needs to continue the project. To delay a decision on the engines creates an incomplete solution for Glendale. We will not be able to cover load when we really need it. Glendale needs reliability and it is required by the balancing authority. Glendale needs cost-effective solutions. We keep hearing about solar as a solution, but just a few weeks ago, we saw how expensive solar is. This council needs to do what's right for its residents and not forsake reliability and cost. Please move forward with the project. Thank you.
Stephanie Delgado? You have one minute. Stephanie, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Stephanie. I ask that you please support Councilmember Brotman's proposal that is also supported by Councilman Najarian. Also, my roommate got, she got disconnected, so here she is.
Hi, my name is Susan Smith and I want to also advocate my support for Councilmember Brotman's proposal.
David Dowell? You have one minute. Go ahead David.
Yes, hi, good evening. My name is David Dowell. I'm a resident of Glendale for quite a few years and I call to, I stand with GEC and want to support Councilmember Dan Brotman's motion that was supported by Aron Najarian. Thank you so much.
Rebecca Henretta? Rebecca, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Hi, thanks to the council for listening. I live in the Spar Heights neighborhood of Glendale. I'm the parent of a young toddler concerned about air pollution. The health of Glendale families is truly precious to me. Also, I think we can see from the invasion of Ukraine by Russia that fossil fuel dependence is also a security threat. I don't think we can count on the prices staying the same in the future. I urge you to support Councilmember Dan Brotman's motion and I stand with GEC. Thank you.
Amy Yazetta? Amy, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. My name's Amy. I'm a resident of Glendale for 67 years proudly and I live in the Verdugo Woodlands. I grew as all the callers who oppose the gas power plant. Please support Dan Brotman's proposal that was approved by Aron Najarian. Thank you for your time. Good night.
Jackie Echo? You have one minute. Go ahead. Jackie, go ahead.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Devine and council members. I'm Jackie Echo. I'm an asthmatic living in Glendale for almost 10 years. We have the worst air in the country. LACounty.gov says our air currently includes particulate pollution, ground-level ozone, lead, carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, and sulfur oxides. Our current overall air is toxic, so we must improve it rather than continue to suffer from lung cancer, heart attacks, children's and adult asthma, and much more. Clearly, we must breathe reliable, clean air daily. I want you to please support Dan Brotman's proposal that was supported by Aron Najarian. Thank you. Thank you.
Joanna Pringle. Joanna? Joanna? Kurt Sostikas. Kurt, go ahead. You have one minute.
Good evening. I'm Kurt Sostikas. I think that it's imperative for our city to move forward immediately with Alternative Seven in its full configuration. I oppose Councilman Brotman's proposal to modify the alternative. Alternative Seven allows highly flexible operation and is clearly the reliability and environmental winner. Just adding transmission increases our chance of blackouts because it might be the transmission source which is lost. On a large scale, the net gains of this project are far better than pollution impacts of other common emitters such as transportation. And GWP will continue to look for additional green energy, but that doesn't mean that this project should not be fully built. Stop looking for a green unicorn. Trust your engineers and professional experts. The Wardzilla engines of the Alternative Seven are a good and valuable part of the project and critical for reliable power. Keep rates down, balance environmental impacts with practical needs, and keep reliable power on. Thank you.
Violet Sakri. Violet? Violet?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Violet Sakri and I'm a resident of Glendale for over sixteen years. Um, we are homeowners in the Kennan Village area and we have, uh, two children, two young children. One of them goes to Franklin and I work close to, work close to Grayson as well. Um, we just want to make a comment to support Dan Brotman's proposal as, and supported by Ara Najarian. In, uh, there, many people have been supporting this in the community for the past four years. There's clearly a desire, not, um, just from myself, but so many of the residents, to, um, support clean energy in our community and to move our community forward into the future. Um, please consider, um, trying not to take the safe route and just having a vision for the future. Thank you so much for your time. Have a good night.
Andrew Elias. Andrew? Andrew Elias? Kat Talarde, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Hi, um, thank you to, uh, Mayor Devine and to the council for taking our calls late into the night. Uh, I am a Glendale resident and a schoolteacher here for GUSD, uh, debating whether to start a family here in Glendale. I am calling in support of Dan Brotman's proposal. I'd love to point out the irony that GWP is concerned about having enough energy to cover peak demand. For example, the hundred fifteen degree heat wave of twenty twenty, uh, which is partially caused by greenhouse gases, right? Which are caused by carbon emissions from places such as Grayson. We're stuck in a cycle that is not working for us. Um, I feel like GWP is speaking, uh, from a place of short-term discomfort, that they don't wanna have to change and fear, but Glendale doesn't strike me as a city full of scared cats. We're a city full of courageous people. Let's act like it. Uh, that green unicorn sounds amazing. That should be our logo. The green unicorn.
Thank you, Kat. Katie Gonzalez. Katie, you have one minute.
Good evening, everyone. Our families live in Glendale, specifically in the shadows of the Shoal landfill and its proposed power plant since two thousand twelve. To the other end, our children attend Franklin Elementary in the shadows of the proposed Grayson project. Needless to say, we're so sandwiched by dangerous fossil fuel investments that will further contribute to climate change and put our communities at risk. I ask you to support Dan Brot- Dan Brotman's proposal, which was seconded by Councilmember Ara Najarian. Thank you so much.
Michael D'Sousa? You have one minute. Go ahead.
Hi, this, hi, good evening. This is Michael D'Sousa. I'm a longtime resident of Glendale. Um, and, uh, actually, I have some insight into this. I worked for Southern California Edison for several years managing energy partnerships with cities and counties in SCE territory during the time when Santa Nofera Nuclear Generating Station was permanently shut down in twenty twelve. This happened now a decade ago and even at that time, Southern California Edison was able to mitigate the loss of two hundred and fifty megawatts of lost power generation from that power plant with distributed energy resources. Many of the same things we're talking about here, energy efficiency, demand response, distributed generation in a cost-effective way. And I was actually part of that effort. Since then, distributed energy resources have evolved exponentially, becoming even safer, more reliable, and more cost-effective. And so with so many, uh, examples out there of success stories of this being done with, by other utilities in other parts of, all over the country, really, uh, there's ample suc- there's ample, uh, information-
Thank you, Michael.
-and success stories out there for GWP to, to learn and do better. Thank you.
Angelo Sarkisian, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Yeah. Hello?
Yes, you have one minute. Go ahead.
My name is Angelo Sarkisian. I'm a sixteen-year resident of Glendale. I want flexible, reliable power for Glendale. I support the five gas backup engines for Glendale to allow support for more important and renewable energy. I fully oppose Dan Brotman's proposal and support the Grayson Repowering Project.
Thank you. Morgan Goodwin, you have one minute. Morgan, go ahead.
Hello, good evening, council. Thank you for taking so much public comment here for your consideration of this item. My name is Morgan Goodwin. I work for the Sierra Club and I am also a resident of South Glendale. I believe the neighborhood is called Tropico. Um, incidentally, I just signed up for your thermostat, uh, demand response program last week. Thank you, it was great. I'm calling to alert your attention to a letter that was delivered to the city council today that was signed by the GEC, the Sierra Club, as well as the California Environmental Justice Alliance, Food and Water Watch, Environment California, Greenpeace, and more, for a total of thirty-two organizations. Uh, that letter, uh, is, uh, says that we have a strong opposition to adding new gas equipment for the sake of our local communities, climate, and economy. Cities across the country are ditching fossil fuel power and we should not be the last city in California to build new gas-fired power. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Steve Dunwoodie, you have one minute. Steve, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Devine and members of the council. Uh, thank you for your dedicated service to the residents of Glendale. Uh, my name's Steve Dunwoodie. I'm a veteran and I plan to teach political science at, uh, Glendale Community College this spring. Uh, I just wanna speak in support of the Brotman motion, uh, with regard to the Grayson plant. Uh, you probably know the saying more than anyone that all politics is local and that's Californians. We have an ambitious goal of carbon neutrality by twenty forty-five. Uh, Glendale is and should be a part of helping us meet that goal and yet Glendale will possibly be the last city for a utility company that will build a fossil fuel power plant. As we watch the events play out on the global stage and the effects of climate change, as a veteran of the Rock War, I have seen firsthand how our dependence on fossil fuels can shackle us as a nation to fail policies that don't meet the moment that we're in. So I'm gonna ask you to ask yourselves whether your future decisions will indeed meet the moment of our time and accomplish our goals as a state, community, and for the next generation. Thank you.
Hasmik Burushyan. Hasmik, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Devine, members of Glendale City Council, staff and residents. My name is Hasmik Burushyan and I am speaking to you all as a representative of the Armenian National Committee of America Glendale chapter. As an organization dedicated to advancing the needs of our residents and state, Glendale is deeply concerned about Glendale water and power, recent proposal to repower the Grayson Power Plant with new fossil fuel generation. This proposal does not reflect the aspirations of the people of Glendale who have repeatedly expressed their desire for clean energy alternatives. Since twenty eighteen, Glendale City Council has stood with the residents of our jewel city. Now, city council must reaffirm their commitment to environmental leadership by supporting Councilmember Brotman's common sense compromise motion, as seconded by Councilmember Najarian. That motion would allow forward movement on aspects of the Grayson project while giving Glendale the time and space to develop alternatives that could reduce or eliminate the need for new gas as, as leaders of our-
Thank you, Hasmik.
Thank you.
Scott Tier, you have one minute. Go ahead. Scott Tier. Go ahead. You have one minute.
I've lived in Glendale for thirty-five years. GWP's plans to spend hundreds of millions of dollars on gas equipment at Grayson will not serve as a bridge to a hundred percent clean energy portfolio. In actuality, every dollar spent on fossil fuels is a dollar not spent on clean energy. Every dollar spent on fossil fuels puts us further away from a clean energy future. Thank you for listening.
Jessica LaBarbera. Jessica, go ahead. You have one minute.
Good evening. My husband and I are Glendale residents and homeowners for the last five years in the Riverside Rancho neighborhood and our daughter will be a student at Franklin Elementary in the fall. We stand firmly with Councilmember Brotman's proposal, supported by Ara Najarian, for the sake of our family, our kids, and our neighbors. Thank you.
Samantha Brahimi. Samantha Brahimi, go ahead. You have one minute.
Hi, I'm calling to encourage you again to approve the Grayson Repowering Project once and for all and move forward with the project and deny Dan Brotman's motion. This project should have been approved two weeks ago, once and for all, but it seems that the council members were unable to do what we voted them in to do, which is to make decisions and not worry about votes right before an election. Glendale needs reliable power generated locally and efficiently and we cannot lack this project any more than we already have. No one wants rolling blackouts. That's going to drive people out of Glendale because they won't be able to rely on Glendale water and power. GWP's dagla- tagline is "Your Trusted Community Utility." That tagline will have to change if we do not approve this project as GWP will not be able to be reliable. Please do what we voted you in to do and stop kicking this project down the road. I do not approve Dan's motion that will, like, everyone has read from their script, was supported by Ara Najarian. Thank you.
John Mayer, you have one minute. John, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. My wife and I are Glendale residents and voters and the parents of two toddlers who attend an outdoor preschool less than twenty football fields from Grayson. I heard the GWP presenter this evening state that Alternative Seven is a progressive profile. There is nothing progressive about burning more fossil fuels. I personally believe that a vote to burn more fossil fuels in the year twenty twenty-two is unconscionable and indefensible and I've counted more than sixty Glendale residents call in to say much the same. Of the five callers I've heard who thus far voiced support for Alternative Seven, three of them didn't even identify themselves as Glendale residents. Please don't make this your legacy. I stand with GEC and I urge you to support Dan Brotman's proposal that was seconded by Ara Najarian. Thank you.
Jacqueline Torosian, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Good evening, Jacqueline Torosian, thirty-six-year resident, born and raised here. You are stalling yet again. My comments are geared towards you, Mr. Brotman. You are single-handedly going to bring down this city. You want to go two summers without a repowered Grayson, yet add more demand response and solar programs to raise our rates? You cannot assume in the middle of summer in continuous temperatures of ninety-five degrees or higher that residents will respond and turn up their thermostats and wait for a miracle. No, it doesn't work like that. Programs like this, uh, work if you have backup in place. If, if customers do not respond, then we go through rolling blackouts. I don't want my rates to go up. I don't want more programs. I want reliability. Why don't, why do we have to be in this uncertain situation? There is a reason not many utilities rely on DR programs. Do your research. Do the, did the California Flex Alert work? No, our own governor bought extra units for a reason because calling on your customers to conserve in high-heat advisories is wishful thinking. You are putting the residents of this city-
Thank you, Mr. Torosian. Thank you. Sam Garibi, you have one minute. Sam, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, council members. My name is Sam Garibi, twenty-year resident of Glendale and a father of four. Um, I highly support Glendale Water and Power in moving forward Grayson Repowering Project. We need to move forward. Enough is enough. Too much tax dollars being used on these, uh, council meetings. Uh, do what you were voted in for and please pass this project. Thank you.
Tim Imus. Tim?
Hi.
You have one minute. Go ahead, sir.
All right. Good evening, uh, Mayor Devine and council members. I am a resident of the Verdugo Viejo neighborhood and, um, I'm mainly calling in to support, uh, Councilmember Brotman's proposal that was seconded by Councilmember Ara Najarian. Uh, I am an electrical engineer myself and I work, I've worked professionally as one and so I understand that there, you know, are technical challenges with reliability and that being like the biggest concern with moving to clean energy. But, eh, we need to invest our capital and our time, like, in those solutions that will be clean energy and will be reliable, uh, because it's twenty twenty-two and we can't keep, you know, going through the status quo of burning, uh, burning fossil fuels. Um, so I'll keep it short and, um, yeah, I support a clean energy future and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tim. Olivia Ramirez, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Hello, thank you for taking my call. Um, as a lifetime, uh, resident of Glendale and an engineer, I strongly urge you to support Councilmember Brotman's motion to pause the decision on approving the gas for Grayson. My voice matters, my health matters, and the future health of the community of Glendale matters. We cannot continue to invest in gas energy when doing so divests from the safety of our Glendale community. This only investing in gas power puts, puts at risk the financial stability of Glendale. It's a California, uh, goal of being at a hundred percent clean energy by twenty forty-five. We need to be investing in soon-to-be obsolete technology. Uh, in, investing in clean energy will be a true investment of energy technology that will last. Thank you so much for your time and again, um, uh, please support Councilmember Brotman's motion. Thank you.
Lisa Shay Reynolds, you have one it, uh, one minute. Lisa, go ahead.
Hi, I am a Glendale resident. Going all green is not cheap at all. I don't wanna pay for programs that I won't participate in. I don't want a modification. I want to know that Glendale water and power will come through for me when we go through heat waves in the summer. Are blackouts not a serious topic for some of you? We cannot just rely on energy-saving programs. The cost of Grayson is free and it will not raise our rates. GWP has spoken to LEDWP numerous times. They have made it clear of what they will do and not do for Glendale. Mr. Brotman, you had all this time to speak to them since you knew about this project and have been saying this over and over and you keep promising it and you never have. I just think you like to hear your name said over false promises. City council has approved many senior housing projects to bring people into Glendale. How are you going to provide power to them? All these letters in the agenda for today, have you read them? Are you paying attention that these are from people that do not even live in this city? That is misleading. Last week, I saw a letter from the chamber supporting this project.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you. Your one minute is up. Larry Morehouse, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Larry Morehouse. I was the plant manager for the Grayson Power Plant for twenty years. I am totally in shock that, uh, Mr. Brotman is putting this project off. I know Mr. Brotman, he has no need for a power plant and he is going to do whatever he can do to keep Glendale from having a power plant at all. It's up to the city council to decide that and I'm looking at you right now and I hope and pray that there's enough councilmen that approves GWP's project right now to get on with it a hundred percent and get it completed. Thank you.
Muriel, you have one minute. I don't have your last name. Go ahead.
Hello, uh, my name is Muriel. I'm nineteen and at Clark High School, Gargantua. Uh, please support this proposal.
Thank you, Muriel. Ted Flanagan, you have one minute. Ted, go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much. My name is Ted Flanagan. I'm a resident of Glendale. I serve on the Glendale Water and Power Commission. I've had the honor of being the president this past year. We've been through two really tough decisions, one on Shoal Canyon, the other on Grayson. Each time, the Glendale Water and Power Commission has unanimously approved the project. In this case, we have approved the Grayson Repowering Project, Alternative Seven. These were not easy decisions. To be clear, my fellow commissioners and I all want a carbon-free future. We want a hundred percent clean energy future as fast as possible, so we balance, this is our, this is our mandate, we balance aspiration with responsibility. We approve these projects and we push for our goal, for our clean energy goal. We approve these projects, and we push for our goal, for our clean energy goal. Let's work together to maximize efficiency in our homes, in our businesses, and schools. Let's work together to maximize our rooftop solar programs. We wish that the GEC and others could be proud of their...
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan.
Thank you very much.
Vicky Kaplan, you have one minute. Vicky, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Vicky Kaplan. I'm a resident of the Rossmoine neighborhood, and I'm calling in strong support of Councilmember Brotman's motion that was supported at the last meeting by Councilmember Aron Najarian. I look forward to your support tonight, and I really want to thank council and thank all of the Glendale residents who have spoken up and called in tonight. It makes me proud of our city, the way we're participating, and that we have a clean energy future ahead of us. I also look forward to voting in my first Glendale council elections, in the upcoming elections, and we'll be watching the vote tonight for that. Thank you.
Steve Gorman, you have one minute. Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, hello. Thank you for taking my call. I'm 62 years old. My wife and I are both homeowners in the Rossmoine neighborhood, and we've lived in Glendale for 26 years. We also, we both do our best to walk the walk on clean energy. We have solar on our roof, and we have a plug-in EV car, and we expect our city's leaders to do their part as well, to give genuine and open-minded consideration to energy technology of the future, rather than going back to the past. We support Councilman Brotman's proposal, which is supported by Councilmember Najarian, and I respectfully but forcefully urge the council to do the same. Thank you.
Patty Silvershire, Patty, you have one minute, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patty Silvershire, and I've been a resident of Adams Hill since 1985. Actually, I only have one question tonight for Mayor Devine and councilmembers. In listening to all these comments, there have been only a handful of people as residents from this city tonight who have called in opposing Dan Brotman's proposal. My question, who are you working for? Who are you representing? Your vote will register that tonight. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Hank Schillinger, Hank, you have one minute, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Devine and councilmembers. I am calling to echo all of the excellent comments I've heard from a vast majority of callers tonight in support of Dan Brotman's proposal. I realize the GWP has put in a lot of time and effort in both their presentations over the last couple of weeks and also their plan, but the fact that they put in that much time and energy is not a sole reason to go forward with the Grayson Repowering Project. My wife and I have done our part. We have solar panels, we have an electric car, and I want to point out to a couple of the callers who mentioned the upcoming election, we have two recent councilmembers on the Glendale City Council who were elected in large part because of their position on green and sustainable energy, and I expect that to occur again, if not increase, in the next election. Thank you for taking my call.
Susan Wilson, you have one minute. Susan, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Devine and councilmembers. I'm Susan Wilson, 15-year homeowner in Rossmoine. I'm calling to support Councilmember Brotman's motion, seconded by Aron Najarian. Councilmember Najarian, as difficult as it may be to ensure reliability, I think that we have to pull the plug at some point and take that motion and pass it. We can't wait any longer. Look at what's happening. They've just released information recently about how bad it is with climate change. Please, please listen to the callers and support that motion. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Oliver Riss, Oliver, you have one minute.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for taking my call. I'd like to add my voice to the many other Glendale residents in support of Councilmember Brotman's proposal that was seconded by Councilmember Najarian. I'm a seven-year resident of the Adams Hill neighborhood, and I strongly support the motion. Thank you for taking my call.
Rod Bearden, you have one minute. Rod, go ahead.
Yes, hi. My name is Rod Bearden. I am a 30-year resident of Glendale, a homeowner in an area called Mountain Oaks Park in Locasenta, and I'm also the HOA president for Mountain Oaks. We do support Councilmember Brotman with his proposal. Thank you.
Steve Bullock, you have one minute. Go ahead, Steve. Steve Bullock, you have one minute. Go ahead, Steve. Joanne Pringle, you have one minute. Go ahead, Joanne.
This is Joanna. Thank you for attempting three times tonight to let me speak. I'm a 37-year resident of Glendale. Please support Dan Brotman's proposal that was supported by Councilmember Najarian. The recent UN report shows we're losing the fight against the climate crisis. Too many of our leaders have taken the easier option, preferring to leave it for future generations, and the war in Europe adds to the urgency of transitioning to clean energy sources that are harder for bad actors such as Russia to disrupt. So please, make us proud of you as leaders. Thank you.
Jennifer Eckery, Jennifer?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
You have one minute, go ahead.
Okay, great. Yeah, my name is Jennifer Eckert. I'm a resident in Pomaceo Park, a homeowner with my husband and our two toddlers, who attend school outside at the Northeast LA Forest School, and I'm very concerned about the air that they breathe. I stand with Dan Brotman's proposal, supported by Aron Najarian. I just think that I'm really in shock that we're talking about moving backwards and not forward. We've heard from so many residents who have solar and electric vehicles. We have the same, and we expect that our city is moving forward with clean energy as well. Thank you for your time.
Rachel Ridgeway, Rachel, you have one minute, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for taking my call. I teach at Glendale Community College, and I would just like to remind the council of their 2017 commitment to join with other cities nationwide in agreeing to the Paris Climate Accord. I am in full support of Dan Brotman's proposal and would urge the city to examine their commitment to their constituents, not only in their short-term reliability, but also in their long-term longevity as species on this planet. And furthermore, I think delay in the contract that is held with the consulting firm that's going to be building all of this stuff is desirable, in fact. I know that you feel that your hands are tied, but really, there's a bigger issue on the table here than...
Thank you, Rachel.
...some short-term negotiations.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Dave Gallagher, you have one minute. Dave, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. My name is Dave Gallagher, and I live in Spar Heights neighborhood of Glendale, and I ask we take a step forward. We've heard from so many engineers tonight citing examples of new approaches, also heard from parents and kids repeatedly speaking to their concerns for clean air. We can't be known as a city installing one of the last gas plants in California. So along with many that you've heard tonight, I support Dan Brotman's proposal that was seconded by Aron Najarian. Thank you.
Angelu Lesaka, Angelu, you have one minute, go ahead.
Hi, guys. I'm Angelu Lesaka, and I just graduated at Glendale Community College last year, so I'm now studying environmental science and policy, and I urge you to support Councilmember Dan Brotman's proposal, because us students are very concerned about the future of energy, and now that we're progressing into more green and renewables, we would like to remind you to make the hard choice and not the easy one, the only love one. Thank you.
David Eisenberg, you have one minute. David, go ahead.
Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Devine. My name is David Eisenberg. I'm the, calling as a homeowner of Glendale for 37 years and also as the chair of the Verdugo Hills Group of the Sierra Club. We support Dan Brotman's motions, and we thank Aron Najarian for seconding them. The thing that, we want you to vote yes, but we also, you know, you've asked GWP to find alternatives since the 2019 IRP. So I'd like to pass the motion, but I'd also like to ask council to make sure that you ask for RFPs to be put out immediately or to find other solutions so that this actually has time to work. So thank you very much for the considerations.
Andrew Ellis, you have one minute, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Devine and councilmembers. My name is Andrew Ellis. My husband and I are 30-year residents of Glendale. We stand in support of Glendale Environmental Coalition, and we support Dan Brotman's motion for, that was seconded by Aron Najarian. Thank you so much.
Joanne Hedge, you have one minute. Joanne, go ahead.
This is Joanne Hedge in the Glendale Rancho. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, then. You have one minute.
Good evening, mayor and council. Yes, I'm just calling to, as a 26-year homeowner adjacent to the Grayson Plan in Glendale Rancho, and I support Dan Brotman's motion, seconded by Aron Najarian. We're at a fork in the road fossil-fuel-wise, evidenced by the geopolitical urgencies between Russia and Ukraine right now. So at 78 years of age, I yearn for cleaner air and a better, sooner, healthier future for the kids, the elderly, and everyone living in Glendale. Thank you.
Roland Kedikian, you have one minute, go ahead, Roland.
Good evening, councilmembers. Roland Kedikian, Glendale residence since 2000. I urge you to adopt GWP's proposal, Alternative Number 7, and begin immediately on the project. We can certainly talk with LAWP for better alternatives or better coordination, but we have to have a backup plan. Ideology cannot be the way we decide things. It's not one-size-fits-all. I urge you to believe in the science, believe in the engineering that GWP presented, and please immediately adopt Alternative 7.
Jose Luis Benavides, Jose, go ahead, you have one minute.
Yes, my name is Jose Luis Benavides. I'm a Glendale resident and voter, and I support the Glendale Environmental Coalition, and I'm asking the city council to support the proposal to modify Alternative 7 to defer a decision on the gas equipment. Voters in Glendale will remember the vote of each city council member today. Thank you.
Greg Astorian, you have one minute. Greg, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Greg Astorian. I'm a resident of the city of Glendale, and I'm calling on behalf of GATOR in support of Alternative 7. This is not to say that we do not appreciate and we do not encourage the city to follow through with Mr. Brotman and Najarian's alternative points that they've reasoned, but there is no reason why not to adopt the Alternative 7 right now, because it will put you on the path of sustainability. It will make sure that we have power when we need it, and by the way, that is the use, the use of the power is only about 14% of the time. So do pursue Brotman, Najarian proposals and the points that they've made, but in the meantime, let's get off, let's get on our feet and approve Alternative 7. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Steve Bullock, you have one minute. Go ahead, Steve. Steve Bullock? Steve? Mr. Bullock? Madam Mayor, I've taken 89 calls at this time. There are no more calls in the queue.
Thank you. Thank you, Aron. Well done.
Thank you.
Let's see, I want to thank everybody that called and voiced your opinion. We had a lot of different ones. I wanted to let everybody know that, yes, we did indeed receive a letter from the Glendale Chamber of Commerce in favor of Alternative 7. I know one of the callers was trying to get that, get that information out. So now that we have completed all of the callers, we can go into questions from our councilmembers and comments, and I'm going to guess that, Mr. Brotman, you would like to start?
Well, I have comments.
Okay, okay.
As far as questions go, I'll just set them aside. Okay, so it's been, it's been a long night, but I also want to thank the people that called. I counted 85, but if the city clerk says 89, I guess that's the number, and appreciate that people really did keep it short. So let me repeat some things that I said two weeks ago, because I think it's important. The first one is, I really want to get this across, that I don't think there are good guys and bad guys here. I really don't. I know there's strong passions. They sometimes spill over, and we get, we get, you know, we get agitated, but I really think, you know, reasonable people can come to different conclusions on this. GWP has been working on this, and their consultants have been working on this for many, many years. I understand the frustration of, and, you know, the desire to just get it across the line. I get it. Having to go back and tweak things like the financing and some of the engineering, you know, procedures and the timing, the sequencing, is a lot of work, and I can understand that they would resist that. But, you know, for me, I come at it from a different place, as I think you all know. My kind of frame is the climate crisis. That's something that kind of brought me into this position in the first place. And we saw just, you know, when did the report come out? Maybe today, yesterday, a new IPCC report, as if we needed another report to tell us, what does it say? You know, give us dire warnings about the consequences of inaction. It talked about people suffering and dying. Some parts of the world will be uninhabitable. So again, we just, you know, we just, we keep learning about how pressing this issue is, and it doesn't mean we throw all caution to the wind. It doesn't mean that we disregard the fact that there are things we can do and things we can't do. I mean, we can't shut down all of our fossil fuel generation now. I would love to, but we can't. So, you know, I get that, but I think what all this tells us is that we need to work a lot harder than we ever thought we had to work before. We need to turn over every stone and really dig as deep as we possibly can to avoid investing in new fossil fuel generation. I think that's, that's the obligation that we have, and I really, I do think that we can do more. We've talked about it. I've talked about it. Many of us have talked about it. There's a lot more we can do with distributed energy resources. We have not gone into commercial solar and storage, and there's a lot of opportunity there, and that's dispatchable if we couple it with batteries. We have not really taken our discussions with LEDWP to the political level, and I think that's something that we, as a council, have failed at, and we need to do, and I think there is an opportunity there. We got a letter two weeks ago, or a little more than two weeks ago, from three city council members. It's an opening that we, we would be failing the people of Glendale if we didn't explore And I think there's some, and since then, in fact... And I think there's some... And since then, in fact, I've learned some more. And there is a willingness, at the very highest levels of LADWP, to sit down with us and to find a way to give us the bridge that we need to get through the next, whatever it might be, three, four, five, six years. And that would give us the time to develop more of these clean energy resources, but also to look into something that is becoming more and more of a potential for us, which is green hydrogen. We've learned recently that Wartzilla itself will be coming out with engines that can burn one-hundred percent green hydrogen right out of the box. We know that SoCal Gas is working on a plan, is committed to a plan, to develop the infrastructure to get green hydrogen to the places where it's needed for generation. And what I would really like to see us do is find a way to work with them so that instead of being the last city to build a gas plant, maybe we're the first city to build a green hydrogen power plant. And I think that would be a legacy we would want to live with for the rest of our lives. I mean, that is... We talked a couple of weeks ago about Glendale being the first. We had the first Apple Store, right? We had the first Bob's Big Boy. We had the first, I don't know, Baskin Robbins. I forget what all the things were. I mean, think about it. If we can have the first green hydrogen power plant in the state of California, I think that would be awesome, and that's something that we should aspire to. And we can see from the people that are calling, from the hundreds and hundreds of emails we've gotten, where the public is on this. The public wants us to work harder, to do more, and I think we can't ignore that. So my motion, and I hate that it keeps being called the Brotman motion. I think that was Councilmember Najarian started calling it that two weeks ago. It doesn't have to be my motion. I think it's just a compromise motion. What it does is it allows us time to explore some of these opportunities without putting the entire project on hold. You know, it's entirely possible that we'll come back in a year and realize we still need some gas. I'm not going to rule that out. I hope not. I don't think so. But I don't want to bet the farm on these opportunities with distributed energy resources, with hydrogen, with some of the other things we've talked about, long-duration storage. I'm not about to bet the farm on it. So that's why I'm saying let's go forward with aspects of the project so that we are minimizing the loss of time, okay? And give us off-ramps so that if these opportunities prove to be realistic, that we can move in another direction, and we're not locked into the five Wartzillas. And that's really what I'm trying to do. So...
Mr. Councilmember Brotman, can I ask you not to make a motion at this point? Let's let all the council members speak before you come up with your motion.
Okay, okay. That's okay with me. I do have... Yeah, I do have the wording here, and I'll read it out. It's slightly different from what we have. And I'm not saying I'll read it out now. I'm saying I'll hold it. But I do want to come back and have the opportunity to read it out. And I also have a comment, a tweak to the resolution that I want to read out as well. But yes, I will respect your request, and I will, I guess, leave it there for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you so much. Okay, Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so it wasn't the Brotman motion that I seconded. It was a... Mr. Brotman raised some legitimate issues that needed to be discussed by us, the council, before the public. And that's what I was supporting, was a discussion of that. Since that time, I have to admit that I have had some discussions with Mr. Brotman, with the GWP, as well as the Glendale Environmental Coalition. So this is a huge project for the city of Glendale. It's got a huge budget, although the budget has scaled down from where it once was. We're still talking about over two-hundred million. It might get to three-hundred million if there's any cost overruns. That's Alternative Seven. I feel that we have to give every opportunity to get as much information as we can to avoid the purchase of the gas units, if there's a possible way to do so. Someone said... One of the callers says, "Oh, we're chasing a unicorn, an environmental unicorn." Well, I don't really think it's a unicorn, but I think we all owe it to the residents, to the region, to the global community to look at every possible alternative. There are questions I have, and questions that have changed. Now, two weeks ago, and at the time the GWP Commission made their recommendation, with those facts before them and before us, I felt that Alternative Seven was the only way to go. But what we're doing is we're changing that paradigm. We're saying, "But what if?" What if we look at this? One of the things... One of the "but ifs" is the whole communication line with the LADWP. Who makes that decision? Is it the mayor of Los Angeles? Is it the DWP commissioners? Is it the Energy Committee of the LA City Council? I'm not exactly sure. Or is it a staff member? Is it the CEO of the LADWP? But it certainly behooves us to sit down, and I appreciate all the attempts that our staff has made with their staff. But staff versus staff, I think, lacks a certain element of the political side to it. And this is a political issue. Part of the ways that we got the Elan seventy-five megawatts back in 2019 was some push by the city of Glendale. And I had written a letter to the mayor, Garcetti, and five, four months later, we got a little piece of it. Did that have anything? Was that the moving force? I'm not sure, but at least it was an attempt at that high level of elected officials that I think meant something. So if we were to get additional power from LADWP, for whatever reason, whether it's through the commission, through the city council, through the mayor, I think it's definitely worth pursuing and looking at. I want to know more about the Wartzilla engines. Are they selling us last year's model? Because I know in a few years, they're going to have an entirely hydrogen-powered model. So have we thought about that? Are they unloading these gas on us now? You know how car dealers are, right? They give you last year's model, and they want to push it out because there's a new model coming in. I think Wartzilla, in their own literature, have stated that they're looking at a hundred percent hydrogen engine by the year 2025. And I don't think anyone would object to hydrogen. It's a non... Obviously, a non-carbon generator, locally-generated. I don't know if we've spoken to them. What if we went to Wartzilla and said, "You know what? Give us the hundred percent hydrogen." Or give us the upgrade. If it's an upgrade in equipment or software or fuel delivery system into those engines... I mean, they're not much different than car engines, basically. They're internal combustion. They're opposing pistons. There's fuel delivery. There's cooling. There's oiling system. I mean, it's just a big engine of that nature. I want to know if they're willing to deal with us on that. Give us an upgrade opportunity, or sell us the new ones in advance. And at that point, we would be perhaps the first in the nation, or maybe the world, at least the nation, to have the hydrogen power plant. I'd like to negotiate with them for the fine points, and maybe we're doing this at this point, but the fine points of liquidated damages. If we end up making an order for those natural gas, and it turns out that there is something better out there, either from them or through some other component, I want to make sure that we're stuck with the least amount of damages that would be resulting from a contract cancellation. And you know what? No one's coming to our aid. Everyone says this is a global issue, and it's everyone's air. The folks that are out there, whether it's LADWP or whoever, they're hanging on... What we've heard of is they're hanging on to their energy with both hands. And they're not really excited about at least Mr. Young's attempts to get some energy from them. But I think we have to change that paradigm. Now, reliability, for me, where do I land on the reliability versus the environmental scale? I probably am just left of center towards reliability. I think that's very important for us. Not being all the way to the extreme, recognizing the environmental impacts. But we can't have energy blackouts, energy brownouts, et cetera. Now, I have a question. There was a slide that was put up. Schedule and schedule impacts. Am I correct that council, going forward, in whatever form we take this, whether it's the top half of that graph or the lower graph, that there are decision points along the way? Is that true, Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. As I indicated in my opening remarks, there will be multiple decision points for council to make decisions on. And that would include contracts with Wartzilla, with Tesla, for demolition, for separation of Unit Nine, and for the balance of the site work, amongst other things, yes.
And those are coming to the council. Those aren't administrative decisions, correct?
That is correct, Councilmember Najarian.
So when Mr. Brotman talks about off-ramps, to bail out... And I understand that there are costs involved. There are some sunk costs. But this is a long-term project. It's a very expensive project. In the event that we get good news at some point from LADWP or from our local... Our DER or the hydrogen engines or whatever, there are off-ramps at each and every one of those change of colors. Is that correct, essentially, or each one of those blocks?
Yes, there will be off-ramps, but as you can imagine, they come at a cost and the risk associated with phasing those or taking those off-ramps.
And just to be clear, there are unknowns with some of those off-ramps. And we're talking about options at this point, but there are things to be negotiated and discussed that will be substantial before we can tell you what those costs will be.
Okay, all right. So unknown costs. You know, our problem is that we're living on borrowed time at this point. If this discussion were something that we were having three, four years ago, I think we'd all be in a much, perhaps, calmer mood and a much more willing mood to investigate alternatives. I do know that we can't wait forever, though. We can't just leave it open-ended because then we're really putting the city at risk. I'm willing to do everything that's in the motion. Well, the motion hasn't been made. But in the discussions that we've had previously and perhaps that staff had presented... But I think we need... We do need to... At some point, there's a time where we're going to have to make that decision and judge whether we were able to obtain any of these goals, the LADWP, the hydrogen, the DER, the demand measures. At some point, we've just... We can't keep looking for alternatives. I'm willing to give a little more time to look at alternatives. So I, at least, with a clear mind, can say, and clear conscience, that we looked, we even extended the time from which the decision had to be made to purchase those Wartzilla engines. And either we did find a solution or we didn't find a solution. But it wasn't for a lack of trying. So that's where I'm at, and I'll match those thoughts with the ultimate motion that comes forward later from Mr. Brotman.
And can I ask Councilman Najarian, do you have any time limit on this postponement?
You know, I don't think we can go another summer. We were talking about three summers to four... Right now, it's at three summers, right? If we go full force right now, it's three summers. I'd like to go full force, as we had initially discussed, as Mr. Brotman had said. Do all the engineering. Do all the procurement. Do all the demolition. Separate Nine. But before we write that check to Wartzilla, I want to make sure that we've looked at every other... Looked under every stone and either we're forced into five, four, three, two engines or no engines if we get hydrogen. I mean, if they say we can give you hydrogen engines in 2025, I'm buying five right now. I'll tell you that because I think SoCal Gas would have the infrastructure to go. But I would say, I don't know what the month was. It's got to be seven, eight, nine months until the time comes that the final contract has been negotiated with Wartzilla and council's ready to make an approval. I think that's our deadline, which is nine months away. And that's if we don't get sued on an environmental impact report. If that happens, boy, all bets are off. We're talking about a year from now. So that's the timeframe I'm thinking of, not past 2022. We're already in March. To get to November, December, it's only one-hundred-and-eighty days, two-hundred-and-ten days. It's not that far away.
Good. Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Okay. Councilmember Kasakian or Agajanian?
I'll be... I can go next.
Okay, Councilmember Kasakian.
Unless Councilmember Agajanian would like to. I know as an engineer, he may.
No, he's saying no. Go ahead.
Okay, well, here we are again. Déjà vu all over again, as Yogi Berra would say. I'd like to ask staff to put up these slides to the city clerk as this discussion was happening. It spurred some thoughts. So if we can go back to... I think there was a previous photo, right? Is this the first one? Okay. So since the 1930s, up until the late 1980s, there was a chemical factory right in the heart of the capital of Yerevan in the Soviet Republic of Armenia. The smallest republic in the USSR was responsible for producing the lion's share of the chemicals needed by the Soviet Union. And during the worst times of repression during Soviet rule, the people of the Republic of Armenia rose up in the first-ever protests during Soviet times in the Soviet Bloc, long before any other countries, including Ukraine or those who danced atop the Berlin Wall in East Germany and West Germany. Armenians took to the streets demanding environmental justice. This was at a time when it wasn't the cool thing to do. It wasn't the Vogue thing to do. This was a matter of life and death for them. And here are some of the photos from these historic protests. People who were speaking out against state policies that could have ended up having them thrown in jail or even were sent to a prison camp. And what you see on the sign here, the first one, says "Oktvek," which means "Give us air" because this factory was such a noxious polluter. The next photo is a photo of the famous Armenian poet Silva Kaputikian, who says "Yerevan has to live." And you can see the images here. If those don't look similar to some of the lawn signs that we've seen around the city against Grayson, here she is in front of the Opera House, I believe. that we've seen around the city against Grayson, here she is in front of the Opera House, I believe, a famous rallying place, speaking on a megaphone to the masses. Yet people then realized how important clean air was and to the basic essence of being a human being, the ability to breathe and live in a world where we aren't harming the environment in which we live. And those protests in Yerevan ignited something that soon spread throughout the Soviet Bloc and transformed into the eventual collapse of the Soviet Union. And as an Armenian American, I wasn't living in Armenia at the time I was born here in the States. But we were following what was happening there very closely. I remember that period very clearly because in our household, where my parents were both environmentalists and committed their lives and worked to clean air and water, we were also proud of what finally caused the chains of corrupt Soviet system to crack was actually the desire of people to live in a clean environment. So I have to say, Madam Mayor, that we have heard over the last course of however many years, I want to say going back almost four years, we have heard from the public very clearly that their desire is to chart a better way forward for our city and cut back the use of fossil fuels to produce energy. And four years ago, we were looking at a project proposal that was going to push the limits to over 200 megawatts of electricity. After some council members dug in their heels, staff came back with a scaled back version. But only after a few council members were willing to take the initiative to hit the brakes on that proposal. I think that then, just as now, we have come down a path that makes us far too reliant on the recommendations that have not yet divorced themselves from the initial inclinations of producing energy using gas and specifically using certain designs of engines with no clear explanation as to what happens when we have spent $200 million and at the time when their use expires because of the laws that will ban us from burning gas by 2045. So we need to make sure that we make a decision that is not only financially responsible. And of course, there is going to be arguments on either side of that, but also one that is environmentally responsible. And I can't support any proposal that has a major financial obligation without a clear exit strategy that also will continue to produce toxins in the environment that will harm the residents of this city and further harm our planet. Now, I support alternative seven because I I want to see us move forward as long as we put measures in place. I understand that it got passed, we adopted this. It wasn't my desire, but now that we're here, we need to put measures in place to limit production of gas and put in place a clean tiered structure for what the city uses to generate power, putting fossil fuels at the bottom of that list. Staff has repeatedly said that this will only be used as an insurance plan if we need it. I don't know if the public necessarily believes that to be true. I want it to believe that to be true, but it's a very big ask of us to have this trust. And we need to make sure that we limit ourselves, we control ourselves. So quite honestly, I don't know if we would be here if we had developed early on a carbon credit system internally as part of the larger citywide strategy to address greenhouse gas production or elimination, a plan where when we're faced with such like a terrible decision as an alternative like this, we like what we find in front of ourselves today, we can double down in other areas of city operations to ensure that we are not increasing our carbon impact on the environment. So I'm eager to see where my colleagues go. A lot has been said of my two colleagues that have put forth a proposal and Councilmember Najarian clarified it a little bit now, but that is where I am this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Kusakian. Councilmember Agajanian? Mute. You're on mute.
Oh.
I think.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Yes.
Okay. See, this project, I just have to explain as an engineer, a professional engineer who worked in on different projects, buildings, power stations. This is not something that you do part of it and you leave the balance of it out and you decide to do it at a later time. See, this, the project is one project. It's cost $390 million project. And let's say Wartzila engines, for example. You have to do the foundation, you have to do the piles. I mean, it's not something that you can do halfway. You have to have a dock or cannon to bring the wires and cables. You can't, you cannot leave out portion of it and do the other portion. It's not like that. As an engineer who did this works, if we come and say, okay, Wartzila engines, we don't want to do five, we will do three. And then later, if we come to the conclusion that we need five, then you have to extend the foundation, you have to do the piles, which is very hard if you don't do all together. Will be as much cost or more than the part you have done. And then at the time, if you ask the contractor, okay, we need for three, now we realize that we need five, let's say. So you are, the contractor will tell you because they don't have contract for that. They tell you certain amount, maybe double the amount, and you have no choice to accept because you want one person to be liable for the difficulties in engineering work that will come up at a later time. If you say, no, that's too expensive because they're going to offer you an unbelievable amount to do the rest of it. The rest of the project to do will be very expensive. Or you'll say, oh, this is too expensive. I go and bring another contractor. Another contractor will do portion of the project. And if problems arises, because this is one project, if problem arises at a later time, one will say, it's not my fault, it's the other's fault. Because this is the piles, the foundation, the cables, the channel who run that, the drains and the buildings and other stuff. This is going to be such a complicated issue. The only thing crosses my mind because people, they say, we want clean air. Who doesn't want it? I have two kids. I want clean air. Who does not want it? There is a situation at this moment, if we use Sunrun, they came in and for 25 megawatt, 25.25 megawatt, they wanted $19 million. So if we want to have clean energy, we have 93 megawatt that we are saying here, we have to have small gas engines. I was the first one in 2017 when I came onboard. And I saw that great, this power station. The power station was 262 megawatt and I never accepted. And there, Mr. Young was here along with Mr. Zern. And he said last time, that the very first meeting, I said, this is not acceptable. It should be maximum of 100 megawatt or less. And after long time, they reduced it to 93. Otherwise, at that time would be 262 megawatt. Because the machines which is in there was what, when I was going 45 years ago, I was going to engineering school, that's what we had in our Grayson. And that was, I was surprised. What I'm trying to say, it's not that easy to separate the project. We have approved the project last, two weeks ago. If we, we want, the only thing we can or we, it's able to do is twofold. Whether we say, okay, go ahead and buy the electric, the gas machines, but don't install them. Do the rest of the job. Just don't install these gas machines because we may not use them. That's the only thing we can do. We can say, do the projects, do not install the gas machines. But the cost of running the wires, cables, the concrete work, the piles, the foundation, everything should be done. The only thing we're going to save, each gas machine or this Wartzila machines are approximately $10 million. So will be that $50 million that we can save. But the foundation and other stuff, everything else will be done. So I cannot imagine to separate and say, okay, go ahead and do the balance of the project and don't do this part. Then you, you are not going to have a person to be liable for the problems which will arise at a later time. You are going to have a power station, but because of the lawsuits, it is not going to be operational. That's why unless somebody tell me, okay, we are delaying the project until we review this Wartzila machines and do it like six months later or three months later to do it later. Or in alternative, they say, go ahead with the project the way that we have, but do not go ahead and order the machines, but do not install them. I cannot imagine how this is going to be solved. This is an engineering project. It's not the way you guys thinking. This is different. You have to be worked on it to know that they tried to say, this is one project. A single project with different factors in it. Different equipment, different structural, structural work that has been, should be done, mechanical work, electrical work, all these, all those separate jobs. They may have subcontractors. But again, one person should be liable for it. I cannot imagine, as I said, what I'm trying to say, whether we say, go ahead and do it, but do not install Wartzila machines or we delay it altogether. Let's review this one more time, six months later or two months later or eight months later. I cannot imagine otherwise how we're going to solve this problem. Thank you. Oh, one more issue. I'm sorry. One more issue. By the way, this entire project worth $390 million. To do this, like based on what we were going to do with Sunrun, for that 93 megawatt gas, if we do not want to do it and we want to make, based on that factor, because the company was offering to to put solar panels on the roof of different people. Will take long time to do. That was just for 25 megawatt. Now we need 93 megawatts. We need 93 megawatts. And the cost of doing that is approximately $800 million. Just to do the 93 megawatts is over $800 million will be the cost. This project, the cost is only $390 million. And we will have two, over 200 megawatt of electricity. With $390 million, we're going to eventually have approximately 250 megawatt of energy. With $900 million, we're going to have approximately 100 megawatt of solar panels, not 250 or 60 megawatt. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Agajanian. Okay, well, this is, this is very difficult and, you know, it's like kicking the can down the road again. Just to clear up a few things that were said tonight and by some of the callers. And I sometimes feel like the that some people don't realize the gravity of of this, this project and what it means to the city. I mean, we are so lucky to have a power plant in our city. A comment was made that these units are going to be idle and and they're, they won't be used. And I know in the past, they've been referred to as being a dinosaur. This is our path to hydrogen. SoCal Gases was stated, has this Angeles link that they're working on, pipeline with, for green hydrogen with the Wartzila engines. We could be, they could be compatible and in a, by the time we, we install them, they could be, we could become compatible with them, with hydrogen. I, I ask about the, the usage, the 14%, that these are only being used 14%. But what happens if they do, if hydrogen does become available and we do convert to hydrogen? Can we go, can we run these for more than 14%? And the answer is yes, we can. We can become a hydrogen plant when, when these are installed. You know, there is, none of, none of us, or I should, I should say it in a positive way. We all want to achieve 100% renewable. Someone sent me an email today and said that I was trying to maximize the use of fossil fuel in Glendale. I am the farthest thing from trying to maximize fossil fuel use in this city. We are reducing the emissions from fossil fuel use by 90% at that plant. It is compared to transportation, it's miniscule. I, I just have always looked at this as, as a way of getting to a hydrogen plant. Another one was, well, you're not listening to GE, you're not, the Glendale Environmental Coalition has a lot of suggestions. The plan is to sit down with them and go through those suggestions and look at them and research them. They've told us about a couple of them and, and we've done the, staff has done the research and found out that they don't work in our city. And we, we will continue to do that. But staff has pledged, and I pledge, and I think council pledges, that we want to go forward and, and pursue more renewable energy. That, that has to be our goal. I would like to see us, I, I was the one that suggested we reach 100% renewable by 20, what, 2030? So why on earth would I want to, to not pursue more renewable energy? I am absolutely for that. I've listened to all of the impacts that putting this off for six months or five months. And now I hear Councilmember Agajanian explaining that, you know, you can't piecemeal a project like this. So that gives me pause. That gives me pause. Are we, are we putting this, putting off the inevitable for several months? We want to have, as a lot of, some of the callers said, reliable, renewable and affordable, affordable energy. You know, we have to plan, I think it was, I won't say who it was that said this, but you know, we have to hope for the best and plan for the worst. And I think that's what this is all about, hoping for the best and planning for the worst. We're hoping that, that we will, we're, we will get to hydrogen in this plant. We are hoping that we will reach 100% renewable energy by 2030, 35. But what happens in this extreme heat that we are getting and the long duration of this heat that we're getting? And, and what if people don't have, we don't have the power? And then we go to LA and they say, and you know, this is, I'm, I'm stating this just like you're saying. Well, well, they're going to, we're going to talk to them and maybe they'll come around. Well, I'm saying, what if they don't come around and we're stuck? So it, you know, this, that road goes both ways. So I'm, you know, if, I'll listen to Councilmember Brotman's and I appreciate, I tell you, Councilmember Brotman, I appreciate your advocacy. And, and I'm, I'm right there behind you. It's just that sometimes we cannot, what is it, sacrifice the, the good for the perfect. But I'll listen to your motion and we'll, I'll let council take their vote. Does that sound fair enough?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Council, Mr. Galanian?
Yes, sorry to interrupt the proceedings, but we'd like an opportunity to, to make a couple of points before. before, after Councilmember Brotman reads off his proposal, his motion, and before council starts taking votes, if we may.
Okay. All right. It's fine with me. Okay, Councilmember Brotman, you want to read your motion?
Okay, so I'll read my motion.
Your second motion? Okay.
Yes, here's, so I move that to adopt a modified Alternative 7 to replace the project approval of February 15th. The modified Alternative 7 would authorize Glendale Water and Power to proceed with the following. One, separation of Unit 9 from the Grayson Power Plant. Two, demolition of Units 1 through 8 and environmental remediation at the Grayson site. Three, procurement of the Tesla battery energy storage system. Four, necessary engineering procurement and construction to integrate the Tesla battery system into the Grayson site. Number five, necessary engineering procurement and construction to prepare for the potential addition of up to five Wurzila engines at Grayson, should council later decide to proceed with any number of these engines. Six, procurement of air permits and emission reduction credits for the five Wurzila engines. And seven, all required bonding to finance the above. And then my final paragraph here. Council further directs staff to proceed immediately with efforts to purchase up to 100 megawatts of reserve capacity from LADWP and with plans to procure an additional 50, an additional 50 megawatts of distributed energy resources and work with LADWP and others as necessary to develop green hydrogen solutions. Council directs staff to return to council with quarterly progress reports on these efforts. So that's my motion. If you would allow me just to mention, there's something in the resolution that I would also like to amend. There is one of the whereas statements where it says, whereas after further consideration, the city has selected a phase-in of Alternative 7 for the repowering of the Grayson Power Plant. Rather than say, has selected a phase-in, I would say, has selected to work on identifying cleaner alternatives to Alternative 7. And then there's another mention of a phase-in. It says, subject to council approval, no, I'm sorry. It says, direct city staff to undertake specified actions subject to council approval necessary to proceed with implementation of this phase-in. And I would say, in place of that, it should say, with identification of these alternatives while simultaneously preparing for the potential addition of up to five gas engines. So I hope that was clear. I'm just concerned with the, kind of the definitiveness of the term phase-in because I think what we're talking about here is buying some time to look at these alternatives while trying to move forward as much of the project as we can so that we minimize the time delays that we experience by looking at these alternatives. So that's what I have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there a timeframe?
Mr. Galanian?
Clarify? Before Mr. Galanian, just for the motion.
Of course.
Mr. Brotman, is there a timeframe? I mean, they're coming back with quarterly reports. I think we need some sort of, I mean, at some point, we have to make, we could study this for a few more years, but what do you suggest we do for that?
Yeah. I know I did suggest that earlier. I didn't know exactly what that timeframe would be, but I think that we could maybe add some language that indicates our intent to make a final decision no later than, could be the end of the calendar year or could be a year from now. Because I agree with you, we can't just keep looking for alternatives forever. But, you know, we want to make sure we're making an absolutely serious good faith effort to work on these, some of these things we've discussed. And if that fails, yes. We only have so much time to let that play out. So I'm with you on that.
Okay, well, I'll.
You're the lawyer, maybe you can wordsmith it.
Well, I would say no later than, perhaps no later than the end of the year, but so long as it doesn't foreclose something sooner.
Could, would you consider maybe August?
To me, that's, I mean, some of these things, you know, going out and looking to identify additional distributed energy resources and working with LADWP on reserves and on this, you know, hydrogen potential, I think, you know, it's unrealistic to think that between now and August, we will have definitive answers on that.
Okay, so I have two questions then for you. Number one, are you saying that our staff is not looking now for alternatives?
I'm saying that we have not, or at least I have not seen a clear path to some of these alternatives. So maybe there's some investigation taking place, perhaps. But for instance, solar and storage on commercial buildings, either through a feed-in tariff program or through another virtual power plant arrangement? No, there's nothing concrete. There's no RFP out to the market. There's no negotiations with any counterparties on that. So I would say on that one, no. I mean, not to my satisfaction.
Not to your satisfaction. And what happens if LADWP doesn't want to sit down with us?
We should know that fairly quickly. I don't think, I don't think that that's a possibility. I've already been told that they do want to sit down with us.
Oh, okay. All right. Councilmember Ogajanian. I'll look for our staff to respond to those too. Go ahead, Councilmember Ogajanian.
I don't see a definite thing that, out of this proposal, I don't see what staff has to do. I mean, I don't see dates, I don't see, and this is a project that they have to know what to do with it. We have to be more specific. I will, of course, I will wait to listen to staff and our city manager, Galanian, and Mr. Young and our consultant. Maybe they have to see if they can follow this. It's not that easy to say something and they go and do the job. I mean, this is not that easy. I want to listen to them anyway, see what they're saying.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, Mr. Galanian and staff.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of city council, before I make an attempt to respond to some of these comments and questions, our city attorney, I believe, has a question to ask.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Galanian. And this question is for Councilmember Brotman. We just want a little clarity on your motion. Number five, necessary engineering procurement and construction to prepare for the potential addition of up to the five Wurzila units? So does that mean that although that engineering procurement and construction will not include the purchase of the units even subject to a termination clause? Are you saying, or are you saying all of that, but have a way to, for the council to be able to decide not to actually add those Wurzila units? You're muted, I'm sorry, you're muted, Councilmember Brotman.
Okay, here we are. I want as, let's see, how can I, how can I put this? What I don't want is that we have gotten so far along with Wurzila that we are faced with a decision that if we do not purchase the units, we're paying, you know, we're substantially paying for them. You know, we're so, we're so deep into this that the cost of us reversing course is going to make it impossible to do so. So I would like to see what, what things we can do so that we're moving things along, but we're not overly committing ourselves. And I know that's something staff is going to have to kind of try to figure out and come back and tell us precisely what that looks like. I don't know enough about this project to be able to say what that is exactly. I don't know if that answers your question.
I think it provides some additional context. Thank you. And then just procedurally, Madam Mayor, members of council, since the item, item 8C2 was the resolution to modify Alternative 7, we were just going to, if that, if Councilmember Brotman's motion moves forward, it would be a motion to amend that resolution with the items that he's read into the record. If that makes sense. So we take both the motion, the items that he requested to actually modify in resolution, the resolution as well as modifying Section 5 of the prior resolution.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Galanian.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of city council. Just let me go over the list of Councilmember Brotman's proposal and initiatives or the motion. All of these can be done. They are doable. We have done them in the past. I feel, to make a comment that we have not made a good faith effort, I don't believe is the right description for what staff has done to this date. And a couple of examples came up. Councilmember Najarian mentioned Elan that we, staff and council worked on to be able to get. LADWP has never closed the door to sitting down and talking to them. They've always had the door open. Up until now, they have been reluctant, as you have heard over and over, to provide additional reserve capacity because they're on the same boat. They have needs. They have an LA 100 to meet, clean energy to meet, and which includes, by the way, I think it's been mentioned previously too, the use of hydrogen. Otherwise, they'll never be able to meet that goal. As it may, the only thing that is not clear to us and we need to bring a report back is number five. And Mr. Garcia alluded to that. That was going to be my question. We don't believe, and based on my personal experience, we don't believe it is possible to start the engineering work, to start the design work without knowing how many of these engines we are going to install. Wurzila Company will have to design the foundation, the piles and all the accessories that will be able to accommodate a number of these units. And they will need to know how many because that will determine the size and magnitude and the design aspect of the foundation and all the pertinent equipment that will have to be designed and built and installed to be able to accommodate these. So if that's the council's desire, then I would suggest that allow us some time because we put on hold negotiations with Wurzila. We need to go back to them and see if that's at all feasible to do or practical to do for that matter. I don't believe so, but, you know, they may be able to find a way before we say, no, it can't be done. Quarterly reports, I believe, and Councilmember Brotman also mentioned unreasonableness. I don't think we'll be able to bring anything of substance to council within three months. You know that these things take a long time. Staff has worked really hard on the Sunrun extensive negotiations with Sunrun Company on the virtual power plant. And that took almost three years. To say that we have not done enough or staff hasn't done enough, that we're not even thinking about putting solar on commercial buildings and facilities or city-owned facilities is not quite accurate. These things do take a very long time. Would be more than happy to send status update progress reports to council via memos that we've done in the past so that you are in the know of all the efforts that we have made. And, but most of it, anything of this nature, it's going to take months and months and months before we can, like I said, bring something of substance for council to be able to make a decision. And another point, another option would be a termination clause. We could opt to move forward with five engines, but in the contract, we'll specify, obviously, it's going to come at a cost that at some point, when council directs staff to stop moving forward with the process of manufacturing or installation of the Wurzila engines, then we have that option of canceling the contract and paying a termination fee. But again, if that's council's direction, without making a decision on the number of Wurzila engines, I would urge you to let us go and have conversation with Wurzila and bring back a report, another report. And I know it sounds like we keep having these meetings and they take a lot of, a lot of time and effort. But I think council needs to have all that information before we make the final decision.
I believe Mark Young has something to add.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Brotman, you said to buy 100 megawatts of reserves. Can you be a little bit more specific on what you want me to go ahead and ask for? And while it might not be appropriate to ask you who I need to speak to in the meeting, I would definitely need a contact because my contacts are at the AGM level and in that area, and I've not been successful.
Okay, my.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brotman. That's not a response that we need at this point. But once we get ready to have those conversations with LADWP, we will find the right person to have conversations with.
And the exact, and the exact, and the exact product?
Yeah. Let me just say, what I have in mind is something where one or two members of the council are part of that discussion with senior people at LADWP, with senior people at GWP and potentially with someone like the commission, LADWP Commission President. That's the idea. Now, I don't know exactly who will end up being the players, but this will be taking the discussion up a level from purely staff on staff to include people that are in the political arena.
And I apologize if my comments made things even more difficult to, for council to decide on, but we could either, Councilmember Brotman can modify his motion or another council member can do a substitute motion based on the comments I had about the possibility of Wurzila being able to move forward or start the engineering and the rest of the work without the knowledge of the exact number of units that we need.
That would be number five? If we omit that number five and then vote on the rest of it?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, if I may, I'm not in favor of going forward on the basis of a termination clause. I think that gets us half-pregnant and I don't think that's the right approach. But if staff needs time to figure out. But if staff needs time to figure out what number five actually looks like in detail, you know, I would say that we, we, we pass this motion as is, and, you know, maybe ask staff to come back and detail what that number five specifically looks like to us at a subsequent meeting.
We can, we can certainly do that, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I, I still am, Mr. Galanian and Mark Young, I'm still concerned about the, the timing of this, and I, I just think that if, let's say we arrange a meeting with the electeds from LAD, from Los Angeles and LADWP, and hopefully if their president of the commissions, GWP, or LADWP is there, I hope ours will be there as well. It, it doesn't seem to me that all of this is going to take till December. You know, their level will just come back and say, no, thank you, that's it? Do we just keep on bugging them for another six months? Or do we get on with this project, or start working towards a contract for this design? And as far as looking for projects, I mean, I know that, that you're, you know, we, we have looked at projects that the Glendale Environmental Coalition has, has given to us, and, and Mark Young's staff has given them reports on it. So I, I'm not sure what, when you say looking for and issuing RFPs, a lot of these projects that they're suggesting are just kind of visions. They're not even real concrete projects that we can, we can look at. So it just seems like we're spinning our wheels. I, I feel like I'm in a revolving door, and there's no way I can get out of this. Does, does, do any of my fellow council members agree with me? No, am I the only one?
Well, can I say something about the projects you're talking about?
Sure, like fuel cells and, and digging into the ground, drilling a well to get to the water, and, you know, this is a great, this is the way we ought to go, and
That's not what I'm
Can I, can I ask for just a point of clarification? Can we have a restating of Councilmember Brotman's motion? Just so I, I understand where we are, and has there been a second to the motion?
No, no, we're still discussing the motion, Councilmember Kasakian.
Oh, can we, can indulge me, please, and let's
Of course, of course.
One more time, so I can, so if everyone feels like, you know, we're, we're going around in circles, maybe we can move on after we
Would you like me to read it, or would Mr. Garcia?
Or, well, if, if it makes sense, Mr. Garcia, how do you understand Councilmember Brotman's motion as being?
Yeah, I'll have Ms. Cordina read it, what we understand.
Okay, I tried to type it as you were speaking, so you can correct me if I got something wrong. But it was a motion to adopt a modified alternative seven to replace the project approval of February 15th that would authorize Glendale Water and Power to proceed with, number one, separation of unit nine from the Grayson Power Plant, number two, demolition of units one through eight, and environmental remediation at the Glendale site, Grayson site, three, procurement of the Tesla battery energy storage system, four, necessary engineering procurement and construction to integrate the Tesla battery energy storage system into the Grayson site, five, necessary engineering procurement and construction to prepare for the potential addition of up to five Wartzila engines, should council decide to proceed with any number of engines. Number six, proceed with South Coast Air Quality Management District permitting for five Wartzila engines, finalize the negotiation of contracts for the purchase of emissions reduction credits for alternative seven, the five Wartzila engines, and then seven, all required bonding to finance the above. Council further directs staff to proceed immediately with efforts to purchase 100 megawatts of reserve capacity from LADWP, with plans to purchase an additional 50 megawatts of distributed energy resources, and work with LADWP and others as necessary to develop green hydrogen solutions. Council directs staff to return to council with quarterly progress reports on these efforts. And then there were some proposed amendments to the resolution to replace wording about phasen with to work on identifying cleaner alternatives to alternative seven. That's what I had.
Councilmember Brotman, how close is that to what you had?
Yeah, that, that was, that was pretty much what I said, and I think Councilmember Najarian had the suggestion that we also add kind of a drop dead date there, where, where we're going to make a decision one way or the other. And I think we were talking about the end of the calendar year as being appropriate for that.
Well, go ahead, Councilmember Kasakian.
And I'm just getting clarification, and is that what Councilmember Najarian agrees to as a modification, and will Councilmember Brotman accept that?
Well, so I, I wouldn't, I'd like some staff input on that as to the timing issue. I don't know if, if that is, is doable there. I know Mayor Devine said a little bit earlier, I think you said August. August might be a little bit quick, I think, seeing that there's summer. But I would welcome any input for, I know, I know, staff isn't crazy about this at all at this point, but what sort of timeline would be doable?
And if, and if I can say, or we, can I say something before staff comments on this? I'm for all of, all of this amendment, okay? I, I'm for all of it, except for the, the amendments that concern LADWP and not looking for other alternatives, et cetera. Because I, I just, I don't know why that has to be in there. I'm not sure why those two have to be in there. I, I think all the other, except for maybe the engineering part, I think that was number seven, wasn't it? Or was it number five?
Number five.
Yeah, number five. That one is the questionable one. Otherwise, I'm all, all for this amendment.
So, Madam Mayor, it sounds like you are in agreement with the majority of this proposal, except for tying or making it required that there's this conversation with LADWP.
Well, I'm not saying that we shouldn't require it. We should require it. It's, it's a good idea, but there's no reason to put it in, into this motion. Neither is the part about looking for alternatives. We are always, you know, and when you state, well, not to my satisfaction, well, what does that mean? Does that mean that because we're not getting anything right now, or any projects, or doing any, is that, is that what that means? Or does it mean that we're not trying? I, I, I don't understand that. That's why I don't feel it should be in the motion.
Can I say something about that? I think if it's, if we have identified projects with identified counterparties that we would feel comfortable putting into an IRP, that's concrete. That's what we did with Sunrun, that's what we do with Franklin, that's what we did with Lime. We had not negotiated those agreements in full, or even, we had just begun, I think. We came out of that last RFP with a project that we initially liked with a company called PermaCity Solar, which was, which involved commercial and industrial rooftop solar and batteries. That got dropped, that wasn't part of the, the subsequent negotiations, and it didn't make it into the IRP. So that's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the kind of thing that we did with Sunrun, with Lime, with Franklin in 2019, and we said, you know, here, we've identified these, these are the megawatts, these are, you know, this is what the program roughly is going to look like, and we're going to be treating that as, as, as a potential resource for us to plan around.
Right. But, but I think also have to, I think, Councilmember Brotman, I think also you have to remember that staff has been working on this project, and then also trying to address other projects as well. I mean, they can't do, we, we can't be looking at, I, I don't expect them to be bringing us two or three projects or sending out RFPs while we're trying to settle this particular issue. Go ahead, Councilmember Kasakian.
So it's, but it sounds like the, the LADWP component of this is critical to many other parts of our overall relationship in terms of energy production, reserves, and a number of other issues that were highlighted. Whether or not this is actually written into Councilmember Brotman's motion, I think that staff will have as clear direction, I believe, from council, and if staff agrees with that, Councilmember Brotman would agree to table that for a later discussion. Would you be willing to do that, Councilmember Brotman, to put forth the, the crux of what your, the majority of what your proposal is, to move us forward? And if, if the issue is an August versus December date, you know, to be King Solomon-esque about this collectively as a body, let's make it October. Let's
There you go.
Figure this out by cutting it in half. If that's, you know, whether staff agrees with it or not, it's not like the first time nor the last time that we'll set a deadline and then come back and revisit it and see what we need to do to get this ball across the line.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Kasakian. Let's ask, let's ask staff if, if an earlier date would be better for, for the, for us moving forward. In, in other words, would October be better than December? Or does it make a difference? It may not even make a difference. What, what is your answer to that, Mr. Galanian or Mr. Young?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, actually, the, the drop, that, the timeline will make a difference. Obviously, the, the sooner the better. We, we make a decision in case we move forward, council direction is to move forward with the Wartzila engines. And, and as you heard during the presentation today, the longer we wait, the more summers we have to go through without a reliable source of backup. I would say if we wait till December, as you know, everything slows down, December, we have the holidays, and then that gets pushed to January. So I, I would, I would agree with Councilmember Kasakian that we should push that up a little early, maybe October, maybe November. However, and again, I, I will caution you that these things take a long time to materialize. We can definitely go back, put an RFP together, send it out, put it on, on the street, see what kind of responses we get, similar to, to what we got, ended up with Sunrun, but, but you know what happened with Sunrun. We'll bring it back. That's not a problem, for sure. And we'll let the council decide whether it's, it's, it's their desire to, to spend that kind of money with, for, for example, solar panel, solar systems on, on commercial rooftops. We have already started looking into installing solar systems on city-owned facilities that we don't, we don't have to have a, a, a citywide RFP because we own the buildings, but staff has already started working on that. But I, I'd like to remind you as to what I asked and tried to clarify on number five on Councilmember Brotman's list, it's, it's, I, I encourage you to let us, again, if that's the direction council wants to move towards, let us go and have a conversation with, with Wartzila, so we get a better understanding of whether this is feasible to, we don't think, we don't believe it is feasible, we don't think it can be done, to, to split the project like that, and to start the design procurement and construction of everything except the, the Wartzila units or the number of engines, without knowing how many they need to design for, for the foundations and all the accompanying equipment to accommodate.
So, so let me just, for the sake of clarity, I mean, we've had a number of comments now, and it feels like the council is more or less in agreement, at least in the direction that we are asking staff to move forward. And there is, I believe, a, a motion that's almost at 100% in agreement with at least the majority of council, even though it hasn't been officially voted on. Can we just nail this down and then have a vote to see where we are?
Can I, can I just, I think, Councilmember Kasakian, I think what we, we, I think we kind of understand the motion. I think what, what Mr. Galanian is suggesting is we, we don't know, you know, given that this modified alternative is relatively new, we've tried to, we've tried to run down as much as we can as how much is going to be feasible. And, and to the point I think that Councilmember Raghavajani made is whether, the question, one of the questions we want to analyze is whether it's more appropriate to do the, to split it up like this, or to do, push pause it all and, and do it that way and, and delay it further. That's kind of where we're at. We want to be able to provide that analysis for you before we go down this road of starting the procurement for, for the batteries, for the, for the, all, all of the procurement for the engineering, all of that. We want to be able to make sure that there, that that's a feasible option that's being suggested in Councilmember Brotman's motion. But it's the council's decision at this point, whether to move forward in motion, and we will, we will obviously take the council's direction.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Raghavajani, go ahead, then, then Councilmember Brotman.
I, I have two matters to discuss, but first, I want to hear one of them, of course. Mr. Tatosian is here. Based on what we have discussed, if he wants to tell us anything about our discussion, if he has anything to say, he's an expert sitting here. Whether it's feasible, is it, if he has any comment.
Madam Mayor.
Tindalina. Tindamichael.
I
Sorry. I guess we need to talk to Wartzila. You know, I, I can tell you that the question of Wartzila and hydrogen, hydrogen was addressed in the response to public comment L5 in the FEIR. And that response was vetted by Wart, by Wartzila. And by both Wartzila and the vendor for the, the gas turbines in alternative eight. And as it says in there, Wartzila's goal, they haven't accomplished it yet, their goal is to have 100% hydrogen engine by 2025. And what we've been told is that the engines that you're procuring, they are not last year's product, they are their current production. The 18V50SG engine is their latest technology engine for, for natural gas, and that engine will burn up to 20% hydrogen. Going beyond 20% hydrogen is, we'll let you know based on their development efforts which are underway. And that's, that's the best I can tell you as I sit here about hydrogen and, and Wartzila. And I think for the rest of it, we need to talk to Wartzila and see what their appetite is, or, or isn't.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
There is one other thing I'd like to say.
Go ahead, let
And that is, to, to address the question of Megapacks that was brought up by one of the callers. The Megapacks that we're getting are the Megapack 2s. That is the latest Megapack design that Tesla's going to be producing at the time we were planning on buying the Megapacks. So we are getting the latest technology Tesla Megapacks. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Brotman.
So I just, I'm trying, I want to bring this to a head, if we can, so I, I would know, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about when we did that RFP back in, I think it was April or May of 2018. I think by the time staff put the RFP out, got the responses, vetted them, and came back and really had some concrete projects that they had identified, that, that took quite a long time. So I, I think, I think that we, we need to set this date to the end of the calendar year. I think anything earlier is going to be really tough to get something concrete. I'm happy to take out that part about LADWP and about 50 megawatts of additional DERs, if you want. So I can, I can accept everything in the motion short of that final paragraph. And, and, and we say that we are going to come back at the end of the calendar year, staff will come back at the end of calendar year, and we will, we will see if our efforts have been able to lead to a reduction in the amount of gas, or no gas needed. And, and if they don't And if they don't, then we'll, we'll have to, you know, go with some amount of gas at that time. So that's what, that's what I would say. And I think, you know, I don't know if I have a second on this yet, but I would ask for a second.
So let me understand this. You want us to wait until staff goes out, issues an RFP for, I don't know what, and we're going to wait until they get, gather all of the applications or all of the RFPs, vet them, and then bring them to us to take a vote on? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying that what I want is, I want staff to identify more distributed energy resources that will allow us to reduce the amount of gas that we purchase, yes. So, you know, if they don't have time to identify those, then how do we know how much we can reduce the amount of gas by? We need to go through that process, and we also need to go through a process with LA because regardless of what we do, we're going to need a bridge from them. And if they can give us a long enough bridge that allows us to wait until those hydrogen Wartzilla engines are available, and if we can get visibility through SoCal Gas on when hydrogen supply is going to be available, then it looks like we have the opportunity to take a different tact on this. And that's, I think, what the public wants, that's what I want, and that's what my proposal is for.
Council, Madam Mayor?
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
Just for clarification, so whatever the date is, if it's end of calendar year, would it be staff to turn to council no later than end of calendar year? Because technically, end of calendar year is December 31st. So I suspect what I'm hearing from councilmember Brotman is if the staff has done the work or has at least done the procurement, the attempted procurement process for additional DER and has results that they can report to council, then you would be, it would be acceptable to bring that, the matter back to, back to the council?
Yes, I think so. By the end of the calendar year, my hope is that we would have visibility on what additional DERs can, can do for us in terms of reducing the amount of gas, and we should have visibility on where we are with LA, with buying reserves, and with these hydrogen opportunities.
I'm sorry, I just have to ask one more question. What happens if we don't get any that we're interested in, and it goes up like maybe till January, February, March, before we get any new projects that are applicable? Everybody? Any thoughts on that?
I mean, we're talking, I mean, we're talking about a drop-dead date, so we would have to have the best information presented to us by December, and we may have to make a leap of faith as to how much power is going to be available and that we would be able to come to terms with the, you know, with the company that's, company or companies that are proposing. I mean, I don't think we can go January, February, March. No, I'm definitely not, I'm not into that. I mean, I think we've got to do everything we can, whether it's a shortened RFP period, even if we're not awarding an RFP, it's coming to us with the information that would let us know what's feasible and what's, what's possible, even though the contract hasn't yet been awarded. And I know that has difficulties in and of itself, looking at Sunrun, I mean, we've been going back and forth a few times, but that way, we would have the best information at that point to make our decision.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Brotman, make your motion.
Well, I made my motion. I'm looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Council--
Sorry. I fell asleep for a minute. Sorry. Sorry. Go ahead.
Councilmember Rajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. Okay. We have decided. And what's next, please?
Next would be oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Madam Mayor, I do not see any callers.
Okay. Then what's next?
Next, is there any new business?
No, there's not.
No new business. Adjournment.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Mayor.
In the memory of Patty--
Patty Mack. Thank you, councilman.
Is there a second?
Thank you. Second.
We are adjourned at 10:54. Good night.
Good night.